I will call the meeting to order, the city council meeting, April 6th, 2021. I think it's 6:25 or thereabouts, and I apologize for the late start. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA, subsection 403A. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using media, meeting ID 84372390603 and password 317632, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask everyone to please mute their computers, and Counselor Lanigan will lead the Pledge of Allegiance and ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if I could ask everyone just to join in with me for a moment of silence? Thank you.
To Counselor Lanigan. Call roll. Counselor Martell.
President.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Tuttle.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
President.
Counselor Lanigan.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
I'm Anne Marie Mistracchio, and I serve as the mayor of the city of Sanford, and we're joined this evening by Stephen Buck, our city manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the manager's executive assistant. Okay, minutes, 21-171-01. Order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on Tuesday, the council meeting held on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move, Madam Mayor.
There's a motion by Counselor Tuttle to approve, and a second by Counselor Stackpole. Any discussion? None? Call the roll. Counselor Martell.
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous. Minutes for 21-172-01, order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move, Madam Mayor.
Motion to approve by Counselor Tuttle, a second by...
Second.
A second by Counselor Martell. Any discussion? Call the roll. Counselor Martell.
Approved, yes.
Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes, yes.
And I am also a yes, that is also unanimous. Next is the mayor's report and city council's subcommittee reports. And I will see if there are any other... I will start, just because it's easier, and then ask for other subcommittee reports if there are any. So I just, for my mayor's report, I just have a very small thing that I want to report on. The mayor's coalition meets on a bi-weekly basis. We decide on what legislative initiatives, right now, we should support and advocate for by testifying at public hearings. I've testified twice in favor of increases to municipal revenue sharing, and while I'm not holding my breath, it is possible that the legislature may increase the percentage allocated. If so, it will be at the end of session, most likely as part of another supplemental budget. In addition to municipal revenue sharing, other areas of focus for the mayor's coalition are bills relating to housing and homeless initiatives, general assistance, EPS funding, broadband expansion and funding, and dispersment of COVID funds. And on April 14th, members of the mayor's coalition will meet virtually with Hannah Pangree from the governor's office, discuss these priorities and the particular needs of cities in Maine. I was present at the Public Safety Subcommittee, which met, actually, two weeks ago, not last week, because we had a week off last week. And at that committee, we discussed a request for a streetlight to be replaced at 68 Shaw Road. The request was not granted because it does not meet the need assessment as defined in the streetlight evaluation form. However, it was decided that in any future streetlight removals, a written communication would be sent to a budding property owners. That's a communication that hasn't happened in the past. The emergency ordinance to alleviate community spread of COVID-19 by strengthening the state's face-covering law and increasing local enforcement lapsed as of March 3rd. The subcommittee decided it was not necessary to bring it forward for renewal. An officer, Small, gave an extensive report on all of the outreach efforts being made to alleviate and prevent homelessness in Sanford. Suffice it to say, he's working hard with many different entities in this regard, and we're lucky to have him on the job. At some point, we will have him in front of the entire council for an update. Land Bank Authority met and updated their committee on properties of concern. 23 Twombly was added to the list, and we're moving forward to next steps for 18 Winter and 37 Montreal Streets. And after much discussion at multiple meetings, it was decided to demolish 12 Pooh Court, as it is beyond rehabilitation, and the lot will subsequently be readied for future sale. The Fire Station Feasibility Working Group discussed and finalized a survey to be disseminated out to the community, addressing concerns and perceptions pertaining to our fire station facilities and future needs. And the municipal operations discussed a number of issues, most of which are on the agenda for this evening, so I won't address those. But we did make a decision, and I don't think we did, you know, things, I forget things, but there will be no Memorial Day parade. Similar to last year, the council will participate in ceremonies at various cemeteries around the city. And there will be no July 4th parade, but we will have decided that we'll have fireworks and a water ski show, no bands, no vendors. We're trying to anticipate that things will be better and that we can do these things. Any decisions that we make, though, will be predicated on our numbers staying low and the governor's recommendations and CDC recommendations staying where they are. And anything else that we discussed at that meeting will be on tonight's budget, I mean, on tonight's agenda. So does anybody have, let's say, Solid Waste Committee, anything that isn't on the agenda for this evening?
Well, that actually is on the agenda later on. It's, we reaffirmed at our Solid Waste Committee meeting, the price per bag, which is here for second reading this evening. And we also reviewed the fee structure for the, right, for the transfer station, that's the word I'm looking for. And there was, there was no change to that. This is going back about four weeks now, so...
That's why, that's fine. I just wanted to, I'm pretty sure that most of your things were like the, the resolution at the, the last, that's on the, that was discussed. So that, you don't have to talk about that, because you can talk about that when it's on the agenda.
Okay. And the other piece was, we did have a joint meeting between zoning and the zoning subcommittee and the planning committee. That was lively discussion, focused mainly on business-friendly. And we agreed that we would meet again and continue, possibly not that discussion in as much detail, but to further the agenda in other areas that we want to explore jointly.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Does anybody else have any report from a subcommittee that they want to? I don't see any hands. All right, I will turn this over to the city manager for the city manager's report.
About that. Trying to get the report here. There we go. As quickly as possible, COVID-19 vaccination and updates, a bit of disappointment news here that, by all accounts, the main CDC, as well as our local hospitals, there has been a recent uptick in the number of daily cases, increases in hospitalization, increases in ICU cases, and increased use of ventilators. You look at our numbers, I mean, they pale in comparison to many other states and many other areas and such, but nonetheless, for us, there is an uptick. They've been talking to us extensively over the last couple of weeks about the presence of variants, but they do note that the vaccinations, all of the vaccinations that we have do account for and address the variants themselves. Cases year-to-date, 52,276, is 290 for the day, that's a reference to the uptick. We have been down at just over 100. And 1,705 hospitalizations to date. Currently, there are 80 people in a hospital with a COVID-19 diagnosis, 32 of those are in critical care units, and eight are on ventilators. And there have been 746 deaths year-to-date. Positivity, though, is 2.9%, that's up from more recent numbers, but still, that's not a bad number in comparison to what we've seen in prior months. Testing volume has gone from a low, it's gone back up to a relatively high number of $548,000 per PCR test. Antigen tests are at 6%, which is not a dissimilar number, and there's 164 per $100,000 there. Looking at comparisons, when I grab the statewide data, you see that York County remains the highest of the big three. Statewide average is 390.6 cases per 10,000. York County's at 535 per 10,000. Close behind us are Cumberland and Andrasgoggin. Looking at our local data, this is the information that we glean, it comes out once per week. I've added this information. This is the number of COVID diagnoses cases for both the Sanford zip code and the Springvale zip codes combined, going back to October 18th of 2020. We had 204 cases of 0.9% of our population had been diagnosed to the most recent data of 318, which we've had 1,431 cases diagnosed here within Sanford and Springvale, which represents 6.8% of our total population in our communities. Looking at state vaccination numbers, continue to look at these, York County versus the state. You see the state's at 41.2% first vaccination doses and 28.17 final dose. So if you've had your second shot of Pfizer, Andrew, or Moderna, or your single shot of J&amp;J, it's counted in this particular category. For us here in York County, we continue to be about 2.3% behind. We, our large vaccination center started up slightly later than some of the other counties did, were at 38.84% first dose and 25% second dose. That's all age categories, that's not specific to just 50 and over. I want to thank the state of...
Steve, can I just drop you for one second? I see Counselor Tuttle's hand up. Can you wait to ask your question, or is it about what he's speaking of now? Can you wait?
Well, it's about what he's speaking about now, Anne Marie.
Okay, then go ahead.
I have a question of, what is the antigen positivity rate, Stephen?
Oh, so we have the, so PCR is the PCR test where they swab your nose, and they're testing you usually at Southern Maine Healthcare or the other large clinic environments. The antigen test is the test that you would typically get at Walgreens, going through the drive-through. So as I was stating, I want to thank the state of Maine. So Amanda Luciano presents to us every Tuesday, us being the York County Emergency Management Agency, has a weekly conference on Tuesdays at 2 o'clock. Amanda is the state liaison that presents in those meetings, and she would present various data sets for us. And she then agreed to send those out to us weekly, so I've been accumulating those data sets. I pushed some of those graphics out to the council, and I pushed them back to Amanda, and I said it would be really great for those of us to really like to see the data, so we can see county by county and such under that. The data that you're pushing to us via that format, they've added that to the state's website now, so I just want to commend them for that. It's a new section in there, if you go to the main CDC at this website, the COVID-19, move to the vaccinations, and then go to the vaccination dashboard. There's the large dashboard that's been there for quite a period of time. If you go to the bottom of that, there's three tabs on there now that you can sift through this data. So if you're a data nut, as I proclaim to be, this is really great stuff. So what they're showing you here is, you have, the blue is the Janssen, the J&amp;J products, you have the Moderna in gray, you have the Pfizer in red. I do not know what unspecified vaccinations are, but there's a category in here for it. It must be they gave vaccinations, but they didn't know exactly which one it was. So we go all the way back to December 14th in here, you can see a week-by-week progression of how many vaccines were given and what type of vaccination, vaccines were given by the week. You can see the significant increase now that we're here in April, and we're starting now to receive more and more vaccinations in all three of the categories. So you can also track the dosages over time. These are, these are all doses, first and second, so they've administered 790,000 doses year-to-date. That tracks that data. And the other part that I appreciate about the third tab on here, this is the information represented here on the left-hand side, all of the counties that I was accumulating, as I continue to advocate to get more and more vaccines into York County, so we could play catch-up in comparison to Cumberland and Obscott, and in comparison to the state averages as well. So they now put that table out there for everybody to be able to access it and view it. I don't have that going live here right now, but if you go over here by the age group, you can sift it out by the age group, and it not only changes it for all of the state data, but it will show you the age distribution by county for those. So if you like, if you clicked on, you know, the 50 and above, get the, how many people have been vaccinated in there. So it's really interesting to see how well the state has done from the 50 and older categories in comparison to some other states. Then it will give you, once you filter that out here on the right-hand side, it will give you the various distributions of Pfizer, Moderna, and J&amp;J, both first and second dose. Again, I want to thank the state for putting that out there. I don't believe I'm the only one that's been asking, but I've been asking, and they did cruise that and put it out there. Thank you again. Moving away from the virus, notice to city councilors. The Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee Nominations Committee has put the notice out that the nominating committee is seeking recommendations for candidates to serve on the MMA Executive Committee. So as an elected official, you will qualify for that if you wish to be considered by the nominating committee. There is a process for this, I have a link in here later on, but they're seeking following municipal positions, municipal officials. Any municipal officer is defined by state law. An active membership municipality means the mayor and alderman or counselors of a city, like when our counselors of a town and the assessors of a plantation. So for any councilors that are not familiar with the process, I can download a packet for you, the link is connected in here. You can download the packet, you're basically putting your municipal experience into the resume, as well as your outside experiences. The Maine Municipal Association's nominating committee will then glean through all of those applications that are put forward, and you will be considered, then, your nomination will be then brought forward by the MMA committee if so selected, and you go out on the statewide ballot for election to one of the six, one of the seven positions on the executive commission for the Maine Municipal Association. So for any councilors that are not aware of this or what the process is, please give me a jingle, we'll get you the information, and I would encourage you to apply if you have interest in serving on the association's executive board. Also, I wanted to put in here a notice to the, to the public. This is a notice to file current use and exemption applications for property taxes. Pursuant to the governor's executive orders last year, they extended the time period that you have to file for these various property tax exemptions and/or current use applications. For the majority of us, and pursuant to that executive order, still being in effect, it applies for this year as well. So you'll have not, historically, if you're filing for homestead exemption for the first time, you have until April 1st of that calendar year to file. You now have up to the commitment date, which for us would be approximately June 25th of this year. So for anybody who has not yet filed a state of veterans exemption, exemptions for homestead, exemptions of business equipment under the Betty program, environment open space, tree growth, those are the major categories that typically get filed, have an extended period of time to do so. So I wanted to raise awareness of that. Links to the information as to how to file are contained in here as well. This comes from the Property Tax Division of State Revenue Sources, Resources. And then the last element is the governor's announcement that the state legislature passed the biannual budget. She believes that it's a budget which maintains current services and invest in public education and property tax relief without any added bells or whistles. So what that means, means for us is there was no reduction in the EPS funding coming to the schools, but that firmed up the surety of that funding. Did the same for us on municipal revenue sharing, it's set at the current 3.75%. So we have at least that as far as surety is concerned. It goes on to further talk that the, there will be a proposed supplemental budget, which is electively part to the biannual budget. We know contained in there will be a unanimous recommendation out of taxation for increasing revenue sharing from 3.75% to 5%. Projections on that is a $530,000 increase in municipal revenue sharing for the city, so we look forward to that positive development coming out of the supplemental with the current budget adoption. And that's all I had for this evening. Thank you.
Steve, could you just clarify for the Maine Municipal Executive Board? Is you, how is your, is, how is your county represented right now? Are we represented on that?
We, I know we have one. So Jim Bennett, the manager in Bitterford, is from York County, you know, serves the city of Bitterford and also lives there. He is the current vice president or the incoming president for the executive board.
All right. Any other councilors have any questions about the management?
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I see your hand.
I was going to interrupt. I know, just a quick question, Steve, to confirm, and more commented, but I actually think he was opposite in my mind. Is the county vaccination information based on residency or where the vaccination was administered? Can you clarify that for us, or do you know?
Okay, so I don't want to, I don't want to misquote anything. It's my understanding that the numbers that are being reported come directly from the physical vaccination location. So like Sanford Supercenter will report, when our IMT teams go out, that would be the three paramedic teams from Sanford, Kennebunk, or Old Orchard Beach, and they do a clinic in Buxton, or they do a clinic in Waterboro. They're reporting vaccinations from that location as being administered.
So it's location, not residency of the person being vaccinated, is what it sounds like?
Boy, I want to say yes to that, but I know that they're tracking, you know, that when you get vaccinated, they're taking your, you get your address, your location, and all of that. So it may, it may be that that they're tracking as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to retract my earlier statement. I know it's the other way around. They're tracking you by your address.
They're going both ways anyway. I did a volunteer segment at the vaccination center yesterday, there was a couple there from Brunswick. So it's coming in both directions. They're finding the first place they can go. I think it's going to become less prevalent as more options become available. I noticed, we're all noticing more options opening up, so, which is great.
So, but with those options, we're also observing, that was a huge part of the discussion today with the emergency management personnel, is that the state's current website that they stood up not that long ago, there's a significant waiting list on there that's not communicating well with the various other software pieces out there.
I was shocked at how many older residents I saw yesterday who still hadn't had their first shot. It was a little shocking, so I would say they were the over 60 crowd.
So over a week ago, Dr. Shaw was saying in his session, I think it was a week ago today, "The day is your day." His reference was, "Before the gates open up to 16 and older, right? Make your appointment. Get, get on the waiting list. Today is your day." Starting today, that it's opened up, so floodgates are open.
We've been waiting for this for a long time.
Yes. So let's hope that we keep getting adequate doses. I know the numbers that were disclosed today, there was, there was an extreme amount of, a large number of compliments from everywhere that went out to the three paramedic teams of Sanford, Kennebunk, and Old Orchard Beach, which comprised the IMT team, in that they will stand up. So they're standing up a minimum of, well, it depends on how much vaccine they're getting, but they've been getting 1,500 doses per week. So Sanford stands up a clinic, Sanford staff stands up a clinic with 10 or fewer people every Tuesday, and does 500 doses in a single afternoon. The Supercenter with 54 people works hard to do 1,000 a day. Our paramedics are doing that in a matter of hours in an afternoon. Kennebunk is doing the same. Kennebunk stands up a clinic, I believe, on Wednesdays, and...
So Steve...
Old Orchard Beach is standing one up, standing one up on Saturdays, so they're doing three of these per week.
So my big question on that is, is the data gathering of the patient and all the information the same at just a quick clinic? So do they just have, they have the data, enter it later?
Nope, nope, that's being done on the fly. They have iPads.
Okay.
With the software. So I know, I went to one of those clinics, they scan your driver's license, they take all of your data down, insurance information and everything else, and by the time you get to sit in front of the paramedic to have your shot, all of that information's been taken and uploaded.
Well, that, to me, tells me, I mean, that the hospital organization is behind a little bit on technology options. Am I wrong?
So the Sanford Supercenter uses Epic, which is the state's, Maine Health's, large software program that they use for everything. The software that the IMT team is using, I'm not sure what that software is, but it ties directly into the state's database.
I got to tell you, one of the things I noticed from doing it yesterday is, because I was one of the persons, people who check people in, and you have to read them all that stuff, you know, do you have this, 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 and this? And that, I mean, it went pretty quickly, and then there was a little bit of backlog in checking, it went pretty fast after that. And there was 500 people in an afternoon. I'm just shocked that we never really did more drive-throughs in Maine, because New Hampshire's doing drive-throughs, and I don't think you, when you're staying in your car, there's a whole step you get to miss, which is, you know, that telling them, do you have this, that, and the other thing? You know, because you're not mixing with anybody else.
Well, let me look at my, my information here quickly, because they were, they were complimenting, oh, I didn't type it down, did I? I don't want to get it wrong, I can't remember, I think it was Old Orchard Beach that had stood up a clinic, they had three bays that they could, people were driving through, two cars to a bay.
Yeah.
They're doing six shots to a time, and Dr. Shaw came up to observe how they were doing it, and said, "That's a model the rest of the state needs to use."
New Hampshire's, Boston, I think, was great. It was awesome drive-through system.
Was that, was that the Buxton Clinic?
That was the Buxton Clinic, Steve, I think. Well, I saw...
I just wanted to, just wanted to put it out there that our paramedic staff deserves a tremendous compliment for this, this work. They're working their normal shifts, they're stepping to the table and volunteering to standard each of the clinics up. They've been so appreciative of the appreciation that the public has shown them during this process as well.
Thank you, Steve. And anybody else have any questions of the city manager? Not, we will proceed with communications and presentations. 21-68-01, report from York County Community Action Corporation on Pandemic... 21-68-01, report from York County Community Action Corporation on pandemic operations and Sanford-specific resources. And I know that Barb Kreider's here this evening. Um, anybody else that you wanna introduce, Barb?
Nope, you're just gonna give me.
Okay. Welcome, and sorry for the delay getting started this evening.
Not a problem, no. Um, well, hello, everyone, and I, I think that, um, either Steve or Ian, someone's gonna work with me on sharing my slides. So I know many of you, and I know that you know our organization, but I don't know all of you, so I'm gonna give you just a really short, um, overview of our organization for those of you who may not, um, know us. And, um, and then I'm gonna talk about some of the specific, um, resources that we have available for Sanford residents, and it is by no means exhaustive. It's not all COVID-related, but some of it is. So when, we'll, we'll get to that. But in any event, um, next slide. The mission of our organization is to alleviate the effects of poverty, to attack its underlying causes, and to promote the dignity and self-sufficiency of the residents of York County. So we have this three-pronged mission. And we, we understand ourselves, we describe ourselves as community-owned. So what we like to say is, we are your neighbors, you are us, we are you. Our board of directors is comprised of folks who are publicly elected, we have private sector representation, we have representatives of people who use our services, whether they're patients at our health center, um, or clients of, of other programs that we run. But we view ourselves as being part of the community, and we want to and hope that we do take direction in the services that we're offering, um, from the members of the community. So, next slide. Just in terms of, to give you a flavor, we have about 220 FTEs. 160 of those are based in Sanford. Um, our payroll is about 10 million, and we do, we have property in Sanford, and we, um, are happy to pay about $72,000 a year in property taxes, um, which we feel is, we feel good about, and we feel it's proper and right, and we avail ourselves of the services that the city offers. So we, we, um, are happy to be able to do that. So, next slide. I want, this is, I'm gonna run through this really quickly, and I think that, um, you know, because we have such a diverse range of services, that it can be kind of confusing, and it can appear a little haphazard sometimes to people. Um, so I, I'm just gonna run through, this is something that I designed like years ago that helps me in my thinking about why do we do the work that we do? So we, essentially, we have four, uh, target groups. Um, the first is people who, they encounter a situation where it's a hiccup, right? It might be a divorce, it might be an illness, it might be a pandemic. Um, but, you know, they're, they're pretty much okay, have been okay, and then they, they encounter a challenge, and without our help, they're not gonna be okay. So for those people, what our role is to help them span through, right? So we might help them with some basic expenses or, and so forth. We don't have long enduring relationships with them. Um, and, and that's our role with those situational folks. Then there are people that we work with, and because of their life circumstances, their, their income is inadequate to meet their basic needs, but they have no ability to increase their income, right? So that this, in this group, I would say there would be vulnerable elders, for example, or living on social security, and that is, you know, they have no capacity to materially increase their household income. So those folks, we borrow this phrase from Maine Housing, they, we like to say, we, we try to help to keep people warm, safe, and dry. Um, and these people, we expect to have an enduring relationship, uh, with, and that we expect them to come back and avail themselves of our resources, um, year after year, because as I said, they don't, they don't have the capacity to, to increase their income. Then there are people who are, might be in a pretty difficult situation, but they have some assets and they have the ability with some, um, help to really make a difference. So these, these are people that we do have a longer relationship with, but our role, what we try to do with these folks is, you know, sort of either we coach them, we might do some credit repair, help them access services, maybe if they went to the community college, um, they could gain the skills they could need, so that they will become financially secure. Um, so we might help them with caring for their children, or transporting them to, to the training opportunity, whatever. So we might work with them for a, an ex, more extended period of time than the first group, but we don't expect to, uh, be with them forever. These are, you know, the people who are going to emerge from their difficult circumstances and, and achieve, um, financial security in, in a sense of well-being that they can, uh, maintain. And then the fourth group, um, are the communities within which we work. And we know that we will never advance our mission if the communities in which we work, um, are not enjoying economic vitality and prosperity. So, so we want to, and we do play a role, we hope, as a catalyst, we're supporting, uh, economic and community development. So some of the work we do, um, is intended, um, to do just that, is to support these communities. And so I would put in that category, for example, um, our transportation program, where sometimes, um, people think, my goodness, looking at your mission, why are you running the Shoreline Explorer trolley system in the summertime? Well, because we wanna help the tourist industry be as healthy and vital as, as it can be. We wanna help, a lot of people that ride the trolleys are, are young people getting to, to jobs at restaurants and hotels and so on. So that's, that's who we are, and, um, and it's just a little bit of a framework for you to think about, um, why we're doing the particular work that we're doing. So the next slide. In the next few slides, and I, um, I promised to keep to 10 minutes, so I'm gonna talk fast, but, and again, this is just gonna highlight some of our services, some COVID-related, some not. Um, but just to give you a general overview, and these numbers are Sanford-specific, and just in general, um, probably around 25% of the resources or the services that we deliver are going to Sanford residents. So York County, the entire county is our service area, but about 25% of, of the services we deliver to Sanford residents. So we have housing services, we own Patriot Place in South Sanford, that's 40 units of housing. We're just, just now renting up, um, eight units on Amherst Street, that was the former Children's, the childcare services of Dirk County, we bought that building, and, and with the help of Kennybunk Savings Bank, and the Ben Home Loan Bank of Boston, and Maine Housing, we were able to, um, convert that to housing. And we just had two tenants move in, and we should have another two, um, coming on pretty quick. And then we do have five apartments that are, we call them transitional units, and those are for families, kind of the group, I think it was Group Three. The folks that we, we work with for maybe one, two, three years, and we help them to become stable, and then, you know, as I said, achieve, um, their own financial security. So, so that's what the transitional housing is all about. Home energy assistance, as you know, um, is help with heating, and this past program year, um, not the one we just finished, but the previous one, we, 1,220 of our households were in the city of Sanford, and they got $608, uh, $648,000. That's a federally funded program that comes to us through Maine Housing, but it's all federal dollars. We also do, um, heating system repair and replacement. Um, that's actually one of the biggest energy programs we have, and we did 40, uh, units in Sanford, and the value of the work was 124. And again, what we do is, we don't actually do the work. We, we send texts out to scope out, you know, what's wrong, and then we sub to a licensed heating contractor. We do some generic home repair that's financed through the Department of Economic and Community Development, and in Sanford, we did two households, probably that would be like a roof replacement, or maybe stabilizing a foundation, something like that. Um, Energy Crisis Intervention, those are people who run out of fuel, um, in, in the middle of the winter, um, and so we can come in and give them, buy them, if they have like, I think it's something like a quarter of a tank of oil or less, we can give them a full tank, just to catch them. So, next slide. Our children's services, um, many of you know that we run the Head Start program. We have about two, I wanna say 286 slots county-wide, and of those, um, 32 of the early Head Starts are in Sanford, and 76 of what we call basics. So early Head Start are babies six weeks old up until age three, and, um, we call it basic Head Start ages three to five. And of the 76 basics, we have 32 of those are duly enrolled in Head Start in, um, Sanford Pre-K, and we have a really, what I, um, we think is a really successful and, um, productive collaborative relationship with the Sanford School Department, um, with the Pre-K school gym. And I, these links, I'm sorry, I, you know, if you email me, or if anyone asks, I'll email them to you, I, you know, because this is a PowerPoint presentation, it's not clickable, but what, what these are is, we did, we did this kinda innovative thing with, um, um, federal funding that we got from the office, Federal Office of Head Start, and we were able to acquire a whole lot of technology equipment, and we created this lending system, so that the families with young children that didn't have either the hardware they needed, or they weren't, they needed a hotspot, um, we were able to, um, deliver and lend them, um, the, the technology so their kids could continue to be engaged with the Head Start teachers, even though we, they weren't coming into the classroom. And then the second link there is their Head Start Facebook page, and if you have time and you have a mind to go on, there, there's some really sweet, um, I, I, you know, our teachers have done such a nice job in trying to stay engaged with families and children, um, even though for a long time we didn't have any classrooms open. We do have, um, some partial opening now, but, um, but there's some really kinda cute, um, videos for you to look at. And then we are, we're meeting later this week, and we're anticipating that, um, part of the rescue plan will include significant investment in childcare, um, for Maine, and so we're trying to position ourselves to be ready, um, to respond to that. We, um, as of November of last year, um, there were at least 30 childcare providers in York County that had gone out of business, um, because of the pandemic. So they're probably not all going to come back, so there's gonna have to be some kind of reinvestment and recreation of the childcare network, which was actually never adequate, um, to begin with, but we're planning and anticipating what we can do to, um, to meet that need. And it, um, I think the pandemic taught us a lot of things. One is the importance of childcare and, and how if you don't have, how difficult it was for families that had young children to continue to go to work, um, when their children weren't in school, and there wasn't adequate or affordable childcare. So, next slide. Our transit services, and, you know, again, when I talk about, um, you know, we've been here working in York County for years and years and years, and a lot of, I think, people know us often by the service that they use. So for a lot of people, we're the bus people, um, for some families, we're the Head Start people. Um, but anyway, Sanford Transit, you see those buses, um, around town, and you actually, um, support, support us in, in running that system. We did 8,939 trips, um, with Sanford Transit. Um, that's down since, you know, because of the pandemic, um, really, um, made it difficult for us to run. We didn't, we didn't run for quite a while, although, you know, there wasn't a lot of demand, because people were going to work, or they weren't going to medical appointments and so on. Um, and then we did reemerge, but we are, kept social distancing, we created a little, um, Plexigas bubble around the driver, and we, um, blacked out a bunch of, uh, several seats, so we didn't transport as many people as, as, um, the buses would actually accommodate in normal circumstances. And we did stop taking fares, you know, in part because people, you know, we were really stretched, but also to minimize that exchange of cash between the driver and the passengers. Our WAVE buses, which I think you probably see them often, and just in case you don't know, WAVE, the acronym, acronym stands for Wheels to Access, Location, and Education. So the purpose of the WAVE bus is to get people either to, um, the community college or, um, to work. So we have, last year, we had almost 900 riders. We went to 234 destinations within York County, and almost all of those are workplaces. Um, and 80% of the people who ride the WAVE are residents of Sanford, which makes some sense, because we originate here. So the WAVE is a curb-to-curb service, running from Sanford to Biddeford and Sanford to Wells and back. And so we will pick you up at your house and take you to your job, and pick you up when your shift is finished, and we run, um, seven days a week, all three shifts. The Orange Line is daily, that goes seven days a week between Sanford and Wells. Um, and I just wanna make sure that you all know that anybody who wants transportation to a vaccine site should absolutely give us a call, um, and we will do everything we can to get them there. And to, Steve had mentioned the emergency management meetings, I know, um, we have an MOU with the County Emergency Management, so if we're transporting people to the, the site more that you were talking about, um, but anyway, make sure that you, you, um, spread the word that people can call us if they can't get to a vaccine site. Shoreline Explorer, as I said, that's the trolley system we did not run last year, we're gonna run this year on a limited basis, so we'll stop, um, we, we're not gonna do the evening, but we will be doing the daytime. So, next slide. Um, Nassau Healthcare, um, as you know, is located on Oak Street in Springdale, and we have, um, as of January of this year, I believe it was, about 5,000, just about 5,300 patients and growing. Of those patients, we have 300 dental patients, 530 medical patients in 23 behavioral health who are Sanford residents. So that's, what is that about? As I said, about a quarter, um, of the current patient panel are Sanford residents. We do, we are, we did do, and we are still doing, a lot of, um, testing. We have a, we are a swab and send site, um, so if you know someone who needs a test or wants a test, please have them call. We're doing, um, vaccines right now. We've been given from the state vaccine for our patient population. We will have available additional vaccine, um, if it's something that, if there is a need. I'm not sure in Sanford, between the hospital, the pharmacies, and the, um, the large site at the former Marshals, whether, whether Sanford needs another, um, community vaccine site, but if you guys think so, please call me, and that's certainly something we can talk about. We are taking new patients. We have seven medical providers, um, three dentists, and, um, I think three behavioral health providers, but we are taking new patients. We don't, um, uh, you know, we, we take anyone regardless of their insurance status or ability to pay, but we are enrolled with all of the commercial. But we are enrolled with all of the commercial payers as well as Medicaid and Medicare. So, everyone on this Zoom meeting is more than welcome to call and become a patient. So, next slide. This slide, I just felt like it was worth sharing with you. There's a group called Capital Link and they're, they're, they have a contract with the federal entity that funds our health center. That is the Health Resources and Services Administration of FERSA. Then they hire these folks. Every other year or so, they do an analysis of the economic impact on the communities in which community health centers operate. So, this is Nassau Healthcare in Sanford, Maine, 2018. So, at that time, we had, we employed forty-one people at our health center. And the methodology that these analysts use indicate that because of that, in our community here in Sanford, a hundred and twenty other jobs were created. And then it goes down, as you can see, the economic impact, thirty-four point two million dollars. So, there's direct healthcare spending, but then there's also spending. And, you know, a lot of this is, I think, a patient comes to us, we write a prescription. The patient goes to a local pharmacy and has it filled. While they're at the pharmacy, they spend a little bit more money. While they're in town, they gas up. We have a lot of, of our, we have more like fifty-five or sixty staff now at the health center. But these folks, you know, they come, some of them live here, but some of them come from a distance. And so, they go to local restaurants and they, they spend some money in Sanford. And so, these are not our numbers, but this is an analysis that was done of every health center in the nation. So, if you want to look it up, you can. And if you want to know more about it, you can certainly call me. Next slide. Our COVID-specific resources, a kind of, I suppose the most important one you should know about is rent relief. So, our rent relief, and there's been several rounds, but in the, in the prior round, we distributed about four point three million dollars in New York County. And that was from the period of maybe December through the end of February. Four hundred and three of those were in Sanford. And the payments go to the landlords. So, we distributed to Sanford landlords just over a million dollars in the first round. The second round, which is significantly larger in terms of how many months of rent can be paid and also allows us to help the tenants pay utilities. That started March first. And this is, these numbers are probably from a couple of weeks ago. And at that time, we had done a hundred and forty-eight payments to landlords in Sanford for about half a million dollars. But I will say, you know, this, this is CARESAC money from the federal government, came to Maine Housing, now comes to us. And this current realm is almost unlimited. It is such a deep source of assistance for folks needing rent. And I thought, you know, just, there are income limits, so it's not for everyone. But just to give you an idea, a family, the upper limit in Sanford for a family of four is sixty-three thousand dollars. So, if their household income is at that or less, they may be eligible. There's, you know, other, other criteria that they need to meet. One person, forty-four thousand and less. It's based on about eighty percent of median area income. So, that's an important COVID resource. We also have a contract with the state and we've been doing social support for people who need to isolate or quarantine. And, you know, those are folks who have either, they're called by the CDC and they're told, you have, you either had tested positive or you are a known contact of someone who did and you now need to quarantine for, it was two weeks, I think it's now ten days. So, most people can do that. They have family and friends and they, they're able to do that, but some people can't. So, we have a contract and we're able to help folks who need to do that and need some help. And we've helped seventy-six people in Sanford. Most of that is buying them food or going to the pharmacy and getting them supplies. Because, you know, those who have tested positive many times are not feeling well and they can't go to the grocery store themselves. We also have what we call a Hope Fund and a lot of our donor dollars go into the Hope Fund. And that's just where someone comes to us and there's not a program that is designed to address a need. But it, you know, it might be something like the transmission blew on my car and I can't get to work. And if I don't get to work, I'm going to lose my job. We can help them. So, over the past several months, and honestly, I don't know the time period here, but in Sanford, we've had seventy-nine Sanford residents and we've helped them out with about fifteen thousand, a little over, worth of assistance. And the next slide. So, still to come on the COVID front and what we're, we're, I, I talked to the, your water and sewer fellow, Andre, the other day. And we will be giving some help for people who are behind on their water and sewer bills. We do believe that there will be help coming. I talked about rent relief. There will be some relief coming for people who have mortgages and have fallen behind. You know, there's the moratorium on foreclosure, which is fine, but that doesn't mean that the debt isn't accumulating. So, there will be help coming for homeowners. We do think there will be some new housing development opportunities and we're watching for that and eager to partner with the city and others because housing, affordable quality housing is a real need all over New York County and certainly in Sanford too. We did get a grant from TD Bank just recently and you'll read more about that, I think, next week in the paper. But we're going to do some tenant education, I think. More, this is something that you've mentioned more than once about sort of working with people and, you know, how you can be a good tenant so that you have a good track record and you're able to move and find yourself another place if you need to.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great idea. I, I noticed as people were getting eviction notices throughout town, you know, and I mentioned some of the things that, you know, they should keep an eye on. The faces adjust, the faces change, you know, they don't think about certain aspects of their tenancy that might actually be impacting the way the landlord looks at the tenancy versus how they look at the tenancy. There are things like, you know, actually when you do pay your rent, how far behind are your rent? But it also includes your, the cleanliness, other issues coming from your, your particular apartment because of that. Are there disruptions caused not by you, but the people you are related to or friends with that might be impactful? It's, it's interesting to see how much that isn't thought of.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, all of that. So, we're going to be doing some of that in this shared housing model, which is kind of a, an interesting idea that the staff here, I don't know that they thought it up, but it was in the application, that, in this grant application. Because housing is in such short supply and there's so many people with, you know, who really have a hard time stretching their income to pay the rent. This is a way for us to help people who may not know each other to actually share an apartment. So, training them and, you know, it's, I guess, a little bit like when we all went off to college and you got orientation with your, you know, your roommate. So, we'll see how that goes, but I think it's, you know, it's an idea, it's a creative idea. Who knows if it will work, but.
That's a great idea, Barb, because I find a lot of young people, I want my own apartment, I want my own apartment. I'm thinking, well, it's a lot cheaper to not have your own apartment and then just work towards something else with your money.
Right, 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 exactly. So, anyway, the next slide, you'll be happy to know is the last. One of the things, I just want, you know, this is our webpage, so please go there if you want to learn more about any. And I didn't touch the surface with all of our programs, many of I didn't even mention. So, you, please visit our website. And the other thing is with this, when the pandemic first started, you know, I went to our webpage and I, I looked at it and I thought, you know, if I'm someone who, I lost my job, I can't pay my rent, I'm hungry, my kids are, you know, so I'm in a panic. And I went to our webpage with that mindset and it was lovely. But, you know, it was sort of organized in the way that made sense to us. So, what we did was, we added a button that just says, "I need help." So, people can click on the "I need help" button and they fill out this little tiny form and it goes to one of our social workers and she gets the forms, goes through them and then responds. And I have to tell you, I, I ask once a week for them to send them all to me. And some of them are so touching. It's been really eye-opening for me just to, to read some of these because they're, they're very, very moving. But anyway, my point to you tonight is, the easiest way, if you have a constituent or a resident that you want to refer to us and you don't know how to do it, you can certainly use the "I need help" button or call our main phone either. So, that, that's that. And thanks for, for your attention. And if you have questions, I can answer them or, you know.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. Well, I think we do have a couple of questions. I just want to say first, I would thank you for being such a good partner to the city because it is really appreciated. I know that I could always send somebody and have them call your, 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 somebody at the desk that just, and they would, they would put the person in touch with whatever they needed. And I really found that helpful and I know that you're still doing that. So, we have two questions that I can see hands up. Counselor Tuttle and then Counselor Hanselman. Go first, Counselor Tuttle.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, Barbara. I wanted to thank you for your help with an elderly constituent that I know that Mayor and I were involved with. And I really appreciate that for a lot of the elderly populations that are going through difficult times. So, keep up the good work.
Oh, good, thanks. I'm glad, yeah, we called, and call me anytime. We, we reached out to that person right away, so good.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just want to say that was a great presentation and Larissa would be awesome if you could forward that to the full council as a, so we can follow those links and so on. But the, the question I have for you, Barbara, is, or, you know, you have your, your city council in front of you here for Sanford. And from your perspective and the work that you do in our community, if there was one thing that you would say we should be focusing on to really help those, part of our community members and our neighbors that are partnering with, you know, YCAC and help elevate their situation, what, what would that be from your perspective? And that's a tough, I realize that's a tough. You could even email me if you wanted, that was easier later, but I'm curious, you know, what, what bubbles up for you?
I will. I think I will say two things. I mean, you know, just in terms of what do people need? Housing is a big, big issue. We also, I believe, we believe, you know, there's a tendency to want to like coach everyone, have, honestly. And what they really need are help in breaking down barriers that are keeping them from enhancing their ability to achieve and maintain well-being, which is kind of a mouthful. But what I really mean is, if we can help them get childcare and transportation so they can get to school or get a job and keep the job because they're not, you know, because they have reliable, basic things like transportation and childcare, you know, they're, they're going to be just fine. So, that's what I think. And I, I think that, the other thing I will say and I, we have been working so hard here at, because we, we are fully aware of, well, I don't know how else to say it, but it's like this blessing, this wealth of resources, that if you work in the health or human service or education field, most people would kill to have under one roof what we have, right? We can help you with transportation, we can help keep your home, we can fix your roof, we can fill your teeth, you know? But what we need to do is really coordinate that well together so that people, so it maximizes the impact on the people that come to us for help. And that's, we haven't done that well, I would say traditionally. We're, we're, you know, transportation thinks that that's all they do and, you know, the WIC program, they see babies and help, you know, give some advice on nutrition. No, we have to work, orchestrate it all together. So, we talk about things like, you know, to view ourselves as an orchestra, but we're paying, playing the same piece of music, right? So, we need the snare drums and the timpani and the violins and all of that, but it's got to come together. So, that's what we're working really hard on. And I think that, that that, that could really benefit by an active partnership with the entire community, you know? And just, it's a work that will never be finished. But, and I will email you too. And I would really appreciate all of your support in, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other questions? All right, thanks for that, Barbara. We're going to go on to the superintendent and the budget committee, who I know have probably been waiting patiently. So, twenty-one dash one seven six dash zero one, presentation from the Budget Committee on the School Budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And Steve, am I going to just turn this over to Matt Nelson? Or are there budget committee members who we should introduce first? I, I'm not sure who's on here right now.
Well, I'm, I'm here. Yeah, just in case people don't know, you know, I know it says my name, Bob Stackfold, Chairman of the, of the Budget Committee. The superintendent and I did confer last week and we decided that he made much, much more attractive slides than, than I could. So, we agreed to let him lead the presentation here this evening. That, that's just a joke. It is somewhat of a complicated budget year, as anybody who's been following the budget approval process knows because of the different funding issues and revenue issues that we have here. And so, we thought that he could do, Superintendent Nelson could do a much better job with the finer points of the budget than, than I could. I, I, I told the Budget Committee that they did not have to be here this evening because we're, we're extending our budget development sessions. And to give them a break, I said they did not have to be here. I know Mr. Davy is here, so, but I don't want to put the other budget, budget members on the spot because they are excused and I don't want it to appear that I'm calling them out. And of course, after this, then the entire city council has the opportunity to ask the superintendent questions. The, the school budget is moving ahead. It has been approved by the, by the Budget Committee. They're done, it's complete, but they also have a timeline, referendum timeline that they have to meet. So, we're moving that ahead and we, but we've determined that the city portion of the budget is, we're going to continue working on that at least until this Thursday night. And we'll see where that goes. And this is also because of the, pretty much the extenuating revenue situations. And we want to make sure as best as we can, as accurately as we can, to predict the impact of the budget on the property taxpayers. So, with that, Mr. Nelson, Superintendent Nelson, you're not on my screen, but I saw you earlier. Are you, you all set to go?
I am, yes, thank you, Counselor Stackfold.
All right, I'm passing the baton to you.
So, City Manager Buck, am I, are you going to control the presentation or?
Matt, I have your presentation loaded up or, or I can turn over the screen control to you if you, if you want to run it, either way.
Yeah, if you don't mind turning it over to me, I'll line it up and be able to run through it that way. I think that may flow better.
And Matt, I think you have a, do you have any school committee meeting members here this evening that are? And Matt, I think you have, do you have any school committee meeting members here this evening that are present and watching?
Possibly.
I think I saw Amy 70, but I don't think I saw anyone else. I'd just like to recognize.
I don't think we're on the Zoom meeting, we do have.
Hi, yes, I'm here. It's Amy.
Welcome Amy.
Thank you.
Larissa, your host this evening, so can you give Superintendent Nelson co-host permission please?
And while that's taking place, my internet connection here, and I think it's gone a little fluky on me right now, I'm going to say it again. My internet connection is a little bit unstable this evening. I already was kicked out of a meeting earlier. So I'm hanging in there, but the voices are breaking up on me and I'm getting messages that my internet connection is unstable. So if I drop out, I'll be back as soon as I can.
Okay, thank you Steve. Good evening everybody. Can everyone hear me? It's my, my pleasure tonight to present the Sanford School Department's 2021 Fiscal Year School Budget. Just to kind of let everyone know and the city council, the overview of our budget process. We start our budget back in the fall and at that time, we were very much concerned about funding. We were hearing through our superintendent meetings that we could be looking at a 10% cut in aid throughout, even before it got into our EPS formula. So that was the backdrop that we were preparing this budget. The orders that I gave our administrators to submit their budgets was, under that context, that we needed to be very, very lean with the idea that we were probably anticipating budget cuts. So our administrators did a really nice job of coming in and submitting their budgets very lean. Our business manager, Cheryl Fornier, she was able to go through those budgets and review them initially. And then she and I set up individual meetings with all of our administrators to go through each budget line by line. That takes us right through the end of January. At that time, we set up with the school committee. This year, with the complexities of the school budget and us having a couple new school committee members, we did have budget workshops twice a week and that worked us through the month of February. And the school committee then approved a budget on March 1st, 2021. That was forwarded to the Budget Committee. I made a presentation to the Budget Committee on March 11th. And then I made a subsequent presentation and another adjustment from the budget that we had presented to the Budget Committee on March 25th. And that's where we were able to get the Budget Committee's unanimous approval for the budget. So I've taken those presentations and kind of cut those down tonight. We're not going to go through everything, but I'm going to try to hit the high points in our budget and then be able to come back and be available for questions. I think we'll start with the slide of a 10-year history of our state subsidy. I do title this "non-debt" because with our construction projects, we have been able to secure a lot of state-funded construction projects. And obviously that would, as a pass-through, inflate our subsidy. But as you can see, going back from 2012, 2013, where it was just under 20,000, we are now, in this proposed budget, a preliminary subsidy of 28,000, just under 28,700. And Sanford, we are a high receiver. And so for us, the EPS model, the essential programs and services, that is really important to us. We do a really good job in the school department to pay attention to that so that we can do our best to try to take advantage of that formula, maximize the formula. I do want to point out that that formula is not a ceiling, that is the floor. That is the minimum that you can be able to, and that's how the model is used, so that they can then go to individual RSUs or municipalities to be able to take additional funding if they want. But that formula for us, as I mentioned earlier, we were expecting to have a decrease in state subsidy. We were able to get a slight increase. There are a couple tweaks and things I'll go over for that. For us, a big part of that formula is your students, is your enrollment and your subsidizable students. And you'll notice there that from the 2021 actual to our preliminary budget that you have in front of you this evening, our students went down. That was a minus 28 and a half students when you look for that. And then obviously, there's less students going through the formula and that's going to be less aid in that standpoint. For the operating allocation for us, and this is just basic operations, we did have a 1.4% increase with that. And what we were able to do, we received a 1.4% increase. And what we were able to do there was, that was because the main Department of Education, rather than freezing subsidy that they had maybe in previous years, they felt that that was not sustainable, so they did make a, an adjustment to their formula. And so that was a change where the elementary student-to-teacher ratio, they moved that down from 17:1 to 16:1. And that was something that really worked out in Sanford's favor. As I mentioned, we really pay attention to that formula to try to maximize it. So by just moving that in one, by one student, we were able to get a 1.4% increase there. Special education, our funding was down just over 50,000. At the end of the day, we had five less special ed students and that's what contributed to that amount. We did get an increase for career and technical education. That's really for Sanford Regional Technical Center. We are, have plans to add a plumbing program for this upcoming year. And that's something due to Mayor Mistracchio, when she was in the legislature, being able to help push for that so that we could get that funding to add programs in advance. It used to be in arrears, but now you can get that funding upfront to be able to help you go and expand those programs. Transportation, we did get an increase. That's the maximal allow by the formula for that. Debt service and leases for that, that was a decrease. When you look at retirement, regionalization, gifted and talented into those areas, that was also another decrease in funding there. That was mainly through the retirement cost, which is a, in essence, a pass-through. When you look at the gross total with debts, that was up 422,000. And as I mentioned, that was really due to that student-teacher ratio and us adding that SRTC program. The state share held study at 75%. Looking at our non-local revenues for that, for a state subsidy for that, we did have an increase of $140,000 with that. That was basically primarily from that basic operating allocation and that addition of the plumbing program. We are going to be getting more students coming from Acton than we are graduating students from Acton. We do have an arrangement with Acton, since they don't have a high school, that they send their high school students to Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center. We're holding state agency clients the same. We did have an increase in adult education. That is primarily that we have worked in a, combining with SAD60, sharing adult education director. That was primarily for that. That's, adult education is a pass-through, where we pay 100% of the director's salary and benefits, but we do get reimbursed 50% from SAD60. And then we did use some of our carryover funds for some one-time purchases in the athletic department and some reduction in some of those fees. And so that's where you'll see total non-local revenues of just over 40 million. I do also want to talk about our school fund balance history. You'll see this going back to fiscal year 2015, where there's a deficit in the red. That then slowly built up through fiscal year 16, 17, 18, and 19, we did have a decrease. That was something where we had become reliant on putting carryover into our operating budgets. We had budgeted in fiscal year 19,000, fiscal year 2019, rather, over 600,000, so we did come in short. So in the budget that we're currently in, we did not plan for any carryover. But last year, due to us, after putting in a budget freeze, after realizing from our, after the audit results to see that we were going to come up short in that projection, and then also COVID-19, obviously, the impacts. Last year in March, we went fully remote for the remainder of the school year and we were able to capture some savings there. Other funding sources that are important to us as a school department, beyond carryover, we also have received some ESSER fund, some federal funds. There's been three of those coming back from the fall into the winter, into the most recent one. As you can see, each one of those have increased. Those are based on a Title I formula that obviously is very advantageous to us here in the Sanford School Department and how the Department of Education distributes those funds. And then you can also see where we are, as well as our state subsidy for the funding sources with that. The preliminary subsidy of 250,000, that is over last year's actual. And preliminary subsidy is 140,000 over last year's budget. And that was mainly due to last year in a SRTC program. We did get upfront, upfront funding for a program that we did not run. So that was something that we did have to be able to turn that money back. I did want to talk about the latest American Rescue Plan. We refer to that as ESSER III. There's a lot of dialogue with that that came up through the Budget Committee discussions that we had in terms of looking at those funds and seeing if there's any way that we could approach those for tax relief. The American Rescue Plan had $122 billion for PK through grade 12 public schools. The state of Maine received over 400 million of that in that particular relief package. The Department of Education has put 370 million of that to the public Title I schools. And as I mentioned earlier, those allocations are based on what districts received in fiscal year 2020 for Part A in our Title I funds that we received. So when you look at that Sanford School Department, we are getting an allocation of 8,541,373. And that was something that was released at the end of March for that. So I do want to talk about that because, as I mentioned, there are some uses for that. There are broad uses, they're all connected to COVID-19. But I do want to point out to the city council, as well as our citizens, that we cannot use the ESSER III funds to replace existing expenditures in our budget. So when you're looking at things that can be used for, you're looking at air quality in our school facilities, school facility repairs and improvements, addressing education recovery and learning loss. That's also talking about summer learning. There's a big focus on mental health services. Obviously, technology is a big piece of this, feeding students during school closures, the PPE and the sanitation that goes through that. And so when you talk about these ESSER III funds, what was different with these was there was a, some strings attached. There was a new set aside of that, that 20%, a minimum of 20% of this funding must be used to address learning recovery through the implementation of evidence-based interventions, such as summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day, comprehensive after-school programs, or extending school year programs. That information, we continued to receive information from that, on that, the Department of Education will be releasing examples of what those evidence-based interventions, I was glad to find out last week in our meetings, that those can also be used for interventions that happen during the school day. Initially, I thought those might have to be things that were after-school or summer programming, which is great and which is part of our plan. But I also, it was nice to find out that they also could happen with the school plan for that. So when we talk about evidence-based, that's going to be critical for us in terms of how we address the learning loss that our students have had through the pandemic and through COVID-19 for that. In addition to the academic piece, we also have a focus on social emotional needs and also trying to do, and focus on those subgroups that have also been impacted for that. So what our plan is in Sanford, we are looking at taking these funds and we are currently working at, the goal for us is to have all of our students, all of our students come back to in-person learning next year for the 2021, 2022 school year, where they're back in person five days a week. Right now, we don't have that. Right now, we have increased from two days a week to four days a week. And that's going well, but we also have a significant number of students who are learning remotely and are not yet comfortable coming back into in-person learning. So that's where, for us to be able to make that happen, we are looking at that for, there are requirements that we have to have for our students to be back in school safely. And so with those requirements, a big part of those are around space, in terms of spacing. Right now, we have limitations on the amount of kids that we can come back to school and also fit with those space guidelines, for example, for everything around in classes, everything around lunch. And so we are looking at the ability to take these funding, the funds, be able to look at adding more staff that we need to in those places so that we can make those spacing requirements. When we talk about staff, the focus is mainly in the classroom, obviously, with teachers and with ed techs. But with the scope of what we're also looking at, we also have a lot of other things that have to be added. There has to be more transportation, there has to be more buses, there has to be more food service, there has to be more custodians. So when we look at that, those are pieces that we also are coming in to be able to use those funds for us to be able to increase for that. So that's a big part of what we're looking at and doing with those fundings. As I mentioned, this budget was very lean. There were positions that we did not include in this budget initially. These were positions that we were looking at even before we were able to get federal funds and be able to do everything we could to get all of our students back in, in school five days a week. These are all of the, just some of the positions that we would have liked to have put in that budget. You can see that they totaled for a million and a half dollars, but that was not in part of the budget. These are some of the positions that we're looking at, not all, in terms of looking at what we can do to help get our kids back every day. The other advantage right now in Sanford, in addition to having the staffing, we also need to have the space. And so as we look at the space right now, we do have a couple, an elementary school that's closed, Lafayette School. We also have another elementary school, Willard School, that we're currently using this year. But that is scheduled to close for our students to be able to move over to the Sanford Pride Elementary, the Formridge Junior High School. So we do have space available. We've been working closely with the city and city leaders for us to be able to have that space, kind of like as a backup and insurance. And right now, we're planning on using that space next year for us to be able to get all of our students back and to be able to meet all of those guidelines five days a week. When we talk about our carryover, there's also concerns that we have when we're looking at not including carryover as a revenue into this budget. And that's really, as we have concerns, as I pointed out earlier in the presentation about our state subsidy, as we look ahead and as we look at what we're looking at, if things stand today, currently, in terms of looking at that formula, we expect to not be, unless things change, unless there are other adjustments or things that are made, where we really expect to be on the losing end of state subsidy next year. For example, in enrollment, enrollment is something where there's an average that they use. And so this year, we were able to buffer that this year because our enrollment in the fall, though it was down, we also were able to use last year's enrollment. Well, this year, we're going to use, well, for next year, we're going to be using. Well, this year, we're going to use, for next year, we're going to be using the enrollment that we had this year, which was down significantly because of the virus. We had a number of families who did choose to withdraw and to homeschool their students, which we would not be able to count or get any subsidy. And so that's something where we're, if you look at things without changing, we've estimated that that could be a decrease of over three hundred thousand dollars. I mentioned that, just that one adjustment that they made to the teacher ratio. They let us know that that was only going to be a one-time teacher ratio, so that's not something that we're counting on. So that was able for us, by making that adjustment, we received two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. If that goes back to the way it was, we won't be receiving those funds next year. And then also, as you can see, not only in Sanford, but also throughout the state, valuations are increasing. And typically, valuation, that is a good thing. But at the same time, when your EPS formulas factored in, when they see an increase in valuation, that's when they expect you as a municipality to be able to pay more. And so if there's no mill rate change and we continue to look at that, we've estimated that that could be almost three quarters of a million dollars. So when you look at those three things, they total one point three million. And for us, we don't want to be back next year looking to have to come back and ask for more money or more increase in taxes. So our plan right now is to kind of hold on to our carryover in the event that we expect that that's going to be something that we're impacted down the line. So when you get back to what the budget is in front of you, and we look at the general education and the CIP expenses by function, you can see that in a school department, we are primarily people. And when it comes to people, a significant part of our budget and expense are salaries and benefits. And so that's where you can see for that, that you're looking at an increase of two hundred, just almost two hundred and two thousand dollars. Purchase professional and technical services, that's up. That is mainly, that's up twenty-three thousand. That's mainly due to the snow plowing contracts. The purchase property, purchase property services, that's also up, and that's going to be increased cost to maintenance equipment and building repair. In transportation, we don't own our buses. We do that. We have a contract with a local company, and we already have a contract in place, so you can see that that is already based into where that increase comes into. Also looking at supplies and energy also going up. Equipment and repairs, we have a slight increase in our CIP. And then we are taking on new debt on the local bond that we had for our school projects for that. So in total expenses, they are up five hundred and forty-five thousand. A lot of that, as I said, is attributed to salaries and benefits. Another big part of that is out of district placements for special education students for that. General education and CIP expenses by cost center, if you look at our, by article here, if you look at regular instruction, that is up due to salary and benefit increases. Article two is actually down in special education. We were able to get a lot of savings there in terms of staff turnover and health insurance changes. Article three, CTE, that is the new plumbing program in the CTE that I talked about at SRTC. Other instruction, there are some salary increases there and some dues and fees increases, so they're up slightly. Article five, student-staff support, we were able to get savings there, so that's actually down two hundred and forty thousand. Article six, system administration, that's also salary increases and plus some dues. Article seven, school administration, that's also due to increases in salaries and insurances. Article eight, transportation, as mentioned, that's a automatic contract with a three percent increase. Article nine is up where you're looking at facilities, including CIP. And four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that increase is going to be the school bond, the local bonds that we had for our schools, the elementary and middle school of eight point six million. This year, we do, in this upcoming budget, have our first principal payment for that. Article ten, construction debt, that's a decrease mainly with that on some of our bonds for the state's projects going down. And article eleven, article eleven is mainly up slightly, and that's due to, in that particular article, an increase. Here's some of our local share of the school debt service. I think I wanted to show that to people for that. When you start looking at that, and there's some of the different bonds and things that we have out, there's a combination of school, school energy bonds that we started back in two thousand and fourteen. Then obviously, you've got the high school technical center construction project. You've also got a state project and our elementary state project. And then we also have some locals connected to that as well. And then we did take advantage of some school revolving renovations, which are really good deals, that those are at zero percent and no interest for those. And here, as you look at it, this is mainly article ten. It is part of the state share of the school debt. And that's going through, that's mainly a pass-through. You can see some people, when you look at it from the outside, who look at a huge increase in the budget, you can say, wow, your budget's up ten million dollars when we, when these projects first hit our budget. But as you can know, that's just simply a pass-through. This slide is important, I think, for the City Council because this kind of tells our story. When we got together back with our first meeting with our school committee, when we had our budget workshops, we were looking at that time of just under a fifteen percent increase, two million two hundred and forty-one thousand. But we were able to quickly cut that down at that time. That initial cost did include pre-K, expanding a pre-K program into all three of our elementary schools, and that would have been of a cost of just under a million dollars. So right now, where we are in the middle of a pandemic, that is not, the timing's not right for that, so we were able to remove that from the budget. We'd also, at that time, projected a health insurance increase for Harvard Pilgrim, which is a major part of our teachers and our food service and ed techs and administrative assistants. We initially budgeted a five percent increase, and so we, at that time, were able to get that down to zero at a rate hold. We also made some other adjustments at the beginning of February. Those adjustments totaled about a hundred and eighteen thousand. We went through a fine-toothed comb, kind of looking at it a little bit closer. Also, some of those were items that we might be able to look at as far as getting them through the school bond, or also getting them through COVID funds, or also getting them through some carryover. We also looked at our act and tuition. As I mentioned, we have more incoming students scheduled than we do graduating, so we're seeing an increase there. We also got our subsidy for community adult education from the state, slight increase there. We did reduce a couple of positions at the high school. We did add a position at Sanford Middle School. We felt that that, adding that position was also going to be one that we could really leverage to not only help badly at the middle school, but it also could help with our high school scheduling as well. We were able to eliminate a lease. And then it came in where our health insurance, not only were we at a rate hold, we were at a situation where we actually had a decrease of five point seven seven percent. So we were able to get that savings, to kind of put that towards that. We did want to make sure that with that savings, we did add back in, there is an HRA to that Harvard Pilgrim plans, and with that, that was something we put back in for an expense to be able to be able to minimize our exposure on that. And then what I did on March twenty-fifth, we were able to come back and make some adjustments to our budget. Those adjustments totaled two hundred, just over two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We used some of our carryover, about fifty thousand of it for some one-time purchases. We also were able to reduce our expenses further, just under seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we also looked at using the federal funds, the COVID funds that we had for just over a hundred thousand. So that was able to get a adjustment of, as I mentioned, over two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that brings us down to an increase of two hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and two dollars, and then a one point seven percent increase. And this is the slide to kind of show the summary, when you can look at it from the operations revenues and then net tax from operations and the CIP, and what then comes out to be total net taxation. You can see what our current budget is and then the proposed budget, then it can also show you that variance. And so at the end, there is what you see is the budget in front of you this evening, is one that is an increase of two hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and two dollars, one point seven percent increase. I am proud of that budget. I think, under the circumstances for us, we've worked hard to try to be able to build a sustainable budget with that. And so in order to do that, there's a lot of planning that goes in there, but you're also going to see where there are some slight increases for that. I will say that we all knew, whether it was the city sides with the roads or was it the school bond that we had of the eight point six million to also offset the construction that we had for our elementary and middle school projects to supplement that. A big part of that this year for us is that first principal payment. So that's four hundred and thirty thousand dollars is already part in this budget. So when you look at it, we actually were able to, even though there's an increase of one point seven, we were able to, in a lot of ways, actually have a decrease in this budget. And so, yes, there is a slight increase there, and we realize that that's going to be challenging under these circumstances for our taxpayers. But as I've outlined in, in, earlier in the presentation, we are concerned about future funding, and we also want to make sure we can use everything that we can for the federal funds to make sure that we can get our kids back to school, all of our kids back five days a week. And also realizing that those funds don't all have to be spent by next September. We do have up until September of two thousand and twenty-three. And so I think that's an opportunity, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to get these funds and to be able to use them in a way to address our challenges, but also leverage them in a way that's going to help for our Sanford kids, our Sanford community, and our families to be able to make the most impact. So.
Well, thank you, Matt. Yes. Bob, can I just ask if there's any questions from counselors first, unless you've got a statement that you want to make about? The last Bob. How about if we just go for questions from counselors, or first, if there are any counselors who are on the Budget Committee that want to have anything to say? Oh, you're back, Bob. I see you now.
Yeah, I was, I was just, I was just going to thank the superintendent and his administrative team, school committee for the excellent work that they've done in preparing this budget and, and working with us and the Budget Committee. Great. I personally think it's a great job. And we all particularly appreciate the nifty little graphics that you used all the way through this presentation. So I am breaking up pretty severely, so I'm going to turn it over to the mayor to handle the question portion of this. I'll stick around, but I seem to be freezing and unfreezing and freezing and unfreezing, so go ahead if you would, please.
All right, thank you. Counselors' questions or our Budget Committee members' questions? Comments? Any hands up? So I'm assuming.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, I was just going to comment that I, you know, as a Budget Committee member and also somebody that attended all of the school budget workshops and the lengthy process they put into it, I'm, you know, in support of the budget in front of us. And I hope that there are questions, people take opportunity to ask them at this time.
Anybody else? I don't see any hands up, so if I'm missing it, just. Can we stop sharing just for a minute, so maybe I can see the whole crowd? Thank you, Matt. That's perfect. Okay, I don't see.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
We're looking at, assuming this budget's approved, a one point seven percent increase in the overall school budget? Just trying to follow all the numbers, and that's, that's the grand total. Okay.
And I also want to add in for, for everyone, but particularly City Council members, this was passed on a unanimous vote by the, by the Budget Committee.
Are there any other questions for the superintendent from counselors? Don't see anybody. And this, this item will be voted on this, later this evening, so anybody that has additional comments or questions can ask them then. Thank you, Matt. Really, great presentation, and I'm sorry that we kept you waiting as well, so. Let's, we'll conclude that presentation and we'll go on to public participation. And if there are any members of the public who are here to speak on items that are not on the agenda, I don't see any hands up. I'm going to ask Larissa to give me a hand if she sees anybody. I don't hear anybody or see anything, so I am going to go on to public hearings. The City Council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-one dash one-one-three dash zero-one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by vetted cannabis company LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at one-six-oh-nine Main Street, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one-three-nine dash zero-one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Northeast Exotics for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit three-ten, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one-four-zero dash zero-one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Botanical Compost LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit five-zero-three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash one-four-one dash zero-one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Mr. Green Thumb, sorry, for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four-zero-seven, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open.
It is a cute name. You can laugh.
Pardon me. No, I was, I'll commit my comment afterwards. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Just want to say that we've done a lot of these now, and every single one of them is a different name and really interesting, so. And it's all marijuana, so I just found it, I'm sorry, I laughed at the last one. It just struck me as funny. Okay, consent agenda, twenty-one dash one-one-four dash zero-one, without objection. I'm seeing no objection. I will declare the consent agenda approved by unanimous consent of the council. Old Business, twenty-one dash seven-nine dash zero-one. Ordered to approve a proposed amendment to City Code, Chapter one-twenty, Article six, solid waste fees, amending the price per sleeve as pay as you, pay as you throw bags from thirteen fifty per sleeve to fourteen fifty per sleeve, starting July first, twenty twenty-one. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
A move, Madam Mayor.
That is a motion by Counselor Tuttle to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Discussion. Counselor Lanigan has his hand up. Counselor Lanigan, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I know that we were speaking, the, the increase was due to like a forty to fifty thousand dollar shortfall based on the new contracts. Representative Tuttle was speaking about possibly working with the legislator on getting rid of that use tax. I'm just coming from a perspective of. it seems that we're always going after the single-family homeowners on our increases. So this increase directly affects the single-family homeowner, and I understand that they do use the trash because the businesses don't have access to it. However, our businesses, you know, have larger trucks driving down our roads with wear and tear, and our residents are paying for that. So I'm just curious, if we were to get rid of that use tax, how would we refund that back to the people that bought the bags? So I question that, if it wouldn't be better to distribute that over, at least this year to see where we're at, distribute it over the tax base? I'm sure the city is looking at higher revenues, the economy is booming. You know, I'm just wondering if that's a better way to approach this year, and then next year, after, you know, having a little better idea with the recycling market kicking back in and possibility with that legislation, then we can go looking at increasing bag prices. That's just my two cents.
Any other counselors who would like to speak? I see Counselor Stackpole has his finger up.
Just a quick response, you know, I agree with Counselor Lanigan with regards to his comments. I don't think anybody, anybody on this council, or anybody all the way around working on this wants to see the the price of the bags increase. Unfortunately, it is the situation we find ourselves in. If Counselor Tuttle is, and the legislature is successful in addressing the use tax, the plan would be to use those funds to not, that would not prevent us from having to increase the price of bags in the future. That's how it would be refunded to the taxpayer. It's not something, it's not an upfront thing, there's no guarantee that this would even happen. Our plan with this increase is to cover this for about two years. We're hoping this will cover us two years, and then we're going to have to look at it in terms of what revenues that we have, and if we have this use tax revenue, might be able to hold this price into the future after the two years. There was discussion, just point out, this is a five-year contract. There was discussion as to what could we do to just extend it for five years? Where would we have to go in terms of price per bag, so that, you know, we could just hit that target and hold it for five years? My opinion, and I think the Solid Waste Committee shares it, we have some variables in here like the revenue sharing part. We're using low estimates on the revenue sharing. We might hit those low estimates, we might not. So there's some variables in the new contract, that we have to give it a year or so to see what those variables are. I wasn't comfortable, I mean, really, we have to look at this as a one-year situation. I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I hope we can do this for two years. Beyond that, I don't know how far we can do that. But, you know, we had looked at going to something like, and I'm not trying to scare anybody, about eighteen dollars or something a bag, and holding that for five years. But we just, we weren't comfortable doing that. We felt it was too much of a jump. So I appreciate everything you're saying, Luke. We just find ourselves in a situation where to get rid of our trash, it costs money, and this is the situation we find ourselves in. I wish there was another alternative, but.
May I just ask just for clarification? What would it look like on the mill rate, the difference of not raising the bags and spreading it across the tax base, City Manager? Bob, do you have an idea? Not to throw you right into the bus, but.
Luke, one thing you should know, the single family is getting a big shift this year in general, just from valuation changes.
That's good. That's a plus.
May I? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Counselor Hanselman has her hand up.
I think we wanted to, I think we wanted to answer the mill rate question. I don't know if Steve can pull that up, but I I really think it's very, very small, as I remember it, Counselor Lanigan, it's a very, very small difference in the mill rate.
Counselor Hanselman, can you just answer that, yes, your question, and Steve can answer the mill rate?
Yeah, he's close to having it, it looks like, but I was just going to comment that, actually, Counselor Lanigan, and I thought you guys were confusing your comment at first, but the exact opposite in my perspective is what's happening with the pay-as-you-throw fee going up, is that we're not picking on, if you will, for lack of a better word, our single-family homeowners, but rather spreading the cost of our trash service across the users of that trash. So there are a lot of single-family homeowners who have very small trash use, and then accordingly will pay less because they're paying per bag, as opposed to putting it to taxation. So that's, that's why I'm in support of the pay-as-you-throw, is that it puts the cost on the actual user, as opposed to the single-family homeowner. Yeah, for instance, Luke, I use the pay-as-you-throw for the apartments.
Steve, do you have the answer for the question that I'm going to ask?
Yeah, I'm calculating it out, so you give me just a moment.
The other, okay.
I think if I can.
Okay.
If I can, if I can just speak quickly to, I think, what Counselor Hurley was mentioning and Counselor Hanselman. It's equitable, and we've talked about that in the past, it's not a new word, but the more trash you generate, then the more you pay for. The less trash you generate, you use fewer bags, therefore you pay less. Whereas if you put this into the tax rate, everybody pays basically for everybody else's trash. So my neighbor who puts out ten bags a week, I'm being hypothetical here, but my neighbor who puts out ten bags a week, I put out one bag a week, I'm also paying for his or hers trash removal, rather than them paying the cost per bag and me just paying for my cost per bag. So it's a more equitable approach to financing this.
And did this come from the, can I just ask a question, please? Did this come from the subcommittee with the unanimous recommendation?
Yes, yeah, it did. And again, I'm going to qualify it by saying, you know, on the other hand, nobody really wants to do this, but we see the reality of it. And, you know, it's a simple matter of economics, and this is a...
All right, Steve, do you have that information? Oh, Matt Hill's got his hand up. Hang on, should I let Matt's? Matt, do you want to speak first, or do you want me to let Steve? Okay, go ahead, Matt.
I've just about got some numbers for you here, so just.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
I would just reiterate what Councilmember Hanselman and Stackpole said, you know, it's a use-based program. But also I wanted to add that, you know, this use tax that the state is currently charging the city, the city doesn't have direct control over removing that, so we can work with the state. We've had very successful partnerships and interactions with the state, but ultimately, you know, it's not necessarily in our hands whether that stays or goes. So if it does stay or go, we can make adjustments then. The City Manager is prepared, you know, this analysis based on a five-year look ahead, and at which point we'll be at a watershed, another watershed moment or inflection point with our solid waste, where we'll have three contracts that will all be up at the same time. So we'll have a really good chance to get our bearings then.
I just want to say about the legislation that, you know, I have to agree with Matt. And as much as I have faith in Counselor Tuttle and Representative Tuttle, I know what happens when something like that goes to the Taxation Committee, and it isn't just us, it would take a lot of, I mean, you're trying to remove something, money that's coming in that they're counting on, so they're going to look to see how much that really is from all over the state. We may be able to convince them that it's a good, it's a good change, but it's going to go through a lot of steps before it happens, so I'm not counting on it for sure. Steve, do you have that information yet, or should we?
Yeah, so here's what I can offer you, is that at change of a dollar per sleeve, so if the average single-family home, which is what I experienced in my own household, be using one large orange trash bag for the pay-as-you-throw program per week. At thirteen dollars and fifty cents per sleeve, that's two dollars and seventy cents for a large bag, so that's two dollars and seventy cents per week. The difference when you go from thirteen fifty to fourteen fifty per sleeve is twenty cents per bag. So it changes your cost from two dollars and seventy cents per week to two dollars and ninety cents per week. So it's a twenty cents per week change, times fifty-two weeks, it's ten dollars and forty cents per year change as far as your use of the pay-as-you-throw system. You dispose of your, at your curbside pickup for two dollars and ninety cents per week, your curbside pickup for both your solid waste, which is in your orange bag, your pay-as-you-throw bag, your trash metering bag, plus recycling, and that pays for the cost of disposing the MSW and the cost of sorting disposing of your recyclable. Two dollars and ninety cents per week. If you take that change of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars that's generated by that change in the sleeve price, and you divide that into an estimated valuation of about one point seven billion, that is four point five cents per thousand dollars of valuation change, the mill rate, using an average of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home, which is the average homestead exemption property card now, the bulk of the highest propensity falls in that. The change of seven dollars and eighty-seven cents per year in your tax rate on that single-family residential home. So there's about a three-dollar, I don't know, two-dollar and forty cents difference there, one versus the other.
Thank you, Steve. I see Counselor Lanigan has his hand up.
No, I'm good. That was great clarification. Thank you so much.
All right, any more discussion on this item? Have a motion on the table, and if there's no more discussion, then I'm going to call the roll. Counselor Martel.
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a unanimous vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, new business, twenty-one dash one-five-one dash zero-one. Ordered to accept and authorize the City Manager to sign a temporary non-aeronautical land lease with Wanzac Construction for a temporary construction laydown area for the Sanford Airport Solar Project. Do I have a motion?
No move, Madam Mayor.
A motion to approve by Counselor Tuttle. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Counselor Hanselman. Discussion, Steve, is Allison here to present this this evening?
Yes, Director Navia here this evening.
Good evening, I'm Allison Navia, I'm the Airport Manager of our Stanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Tonight on the agenda, I have for authorization a temporary non-aeronautical land lease. So this has to do with the construction phase of the solar project. The construction of the project was substantially complete last November, and it started generating power over at the airport and up on the north lot, but there is a punch list of items that couldn't be completed before winter set in. So this land lease is just a very short term, it's three months initial, and then if things don't go as planned, which construction tends to do sometimes, then it goes on a month-to-month basis for up to six more months. So that would essentially get us through this entire construction season, should that be necessary. So this allows them to do this lease in the same area that they were leasing before, so that they can continue and finish up all those last little parts and pieces to button up the project.
Okay, any questions? There are no questions, I will call the roll. Counselor Martel.
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman.
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle.
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole.
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan.
Oh, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that is unanimous. Okay, twenty-one dash one-eight-four dash zero-one, ordered to approve a request for an MDOT overlimit permit for construction on two projects and to authorize the City Manager to sign on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move, Madam Mayor.
A motion by Counselor Tuttle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Steve, do you want to do this, or is Matt going to discuss this?
I would defer to Matt as far as discussing the actual scope of the project, then if you want to come back to me as far as why it is that we're doing these, or...
Nope, I think that, I thought we had that discussion already, but I'll let Matt just give a brief overview.
Sure, just a little additional PR. Sanford was very fortunate this year to receive additional funding from the Maine Department of Transportation for the upkeep and maintenance of our primary arterials. Two of these projects have been forwarded to the City Manager in regards to the contractor requiring overlimit weight, abilities to travel on some of our roads. They're intended to basically be insurance policies that they don't damage any of our roads, that they are dragging around this very heavy machinery on. We would like to keep them as much as possible on these state roads, but if they decide to go on city roads, we want to have that discussion upfront. We want to know which roads they're going on, maybe take a look at what those roads are, what condition they're in now, and then maybe come in afterwards and take a look at, you know, if there's damage done to them as a result. Hopefully that won't be the case, but this is kind of a big insurance policy.
Thank you, Matt. Any other discussion or questions? If not, then I'm going to call the roll. Counselor Martel. Oh, excuse me, I saw Counselor Lanigan's hand up. I don't have to start yet. Go ahead, Counselor Lanigan.
So, sorry, and it's just because I noticed this in some other communities while I was out this weekend. Some of the roads, they have permanently posted where like vehicles over twenty-four thousand pounds aren't allowed to travel down. I'm thinking situations like Mount Hope, where I see tractor-trailer trucks fully freighted coming down, and that road's already in terrible condition, and what they're really trying to do is just cut around a small section of our city. So I just didn't know, is that sort of what you're talking about here, Matt, or is this a different, different thing?
Actually, Mount Hope is kind of a different example. We're going to be reconstructing that this year, and it should be able to take those trucks in the future. These are arterial projects on two-oh-two and one-oh-nine, where they're bringing in like very heavy, like, equipment that basically recycles the roadway in place. So it's larger than your average paver or grinder, it's combination machinery that's quite heavy, and DOT feels the need to include in those contracts and then also seek municipal concurrence to bring that to town.
Okay. Maybe a future agenda item, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Really, it goes, it goes to, yeah, it goes to the non-divisible load, so it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be allowed to haul in asphalt or any other materials and such unto that as overlimit loads, it's the non-divisible loads of those large pieces of apparatus that was described by Director Hill.
Yeah, think of a machine that not only chews up the roadway, but also receives additional asphalt, mixes it all together, and then puts it all down. It's quite an operation, and I'm actually excited to see it. I've never seen one in person.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up, and we have a motion on the table, so unless there's more discussion, I am going to call the roll. Counselor Martel.
I actually just had a comment, and a quick question, sorry. I have my hand up.
Oh, I didn't see.
A lot of people on the call, that's okay. So just to clarify, this is going from, looks like just east of Walmart, up towards maybe right around where Shane's is, is that about correct?
No, it's from the city limits with Wells all the way up to the roundabout.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you're right, actually, where Shane's is, yeah, just about there, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and then two-oh-two is on the, it's on the Alfred side, I believe, Alfred to the Urban Compact Line, is that right?
Are you ready for the? Go ahead, Steve, maybe you could just clarify.
Yeah, from June Street going east two point nine-nine miles on Route two-oh-two.
Yeah.
The second project.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, DOT is actually doing additional arterial work, but this is the, this is the cold-in-place recycle. So, yeah, it's on one-oh-nine from the city limits with Wells to the roundabout, and then on Route two-oh-two. and then on Route two oh two from the Urban Compact Line, which is beyond Hospital Hill out to the Alfred Line.
Okay. Yeah, basically my, I guess what I was getting at is it doesn't look like any of this really heavy equipment is going to be in the middle of downtown or going through any of the number one pond bridges or anything like that.
Well, that's, that's the real question is, is who is awarded the contract and where do they need to travel? Um, depending on where they're coming from, uh, that, that's why we want to have the conversation upfront. We generally have a pre-construction meeting with them. We develop a trucking route, uh, both for their, their mobilization as well as if they're taking materials in and out. We, we establish where they're going to go. We don't, we try to keep them off of local streets, out of residential neighborhoods, things like that. Just trying to be, you know, good neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the roll.
Uh, yes.
Your motion, motion on the table? Counselor Martell?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
I think we lost him.
Gets back on. Are you, see him on there?
He's not here. He's not here.
Okay, we'll skip him. Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so that is six to zero with, um, Counselor Stackpole will give him a chance to register his vote when he, the motion passed.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask you to change the order?
I already have it on. I'm all set. I'm going to take an item out of order, okay? Without objection, I'm proposing that we will take an item out of order. We'll do twenty-one dash one-seven-seven dash zero-one. Ordered to receive and take action on the Budget Committee's recommendation, the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two school budget. And I'll ask for a motion and Steve, do we need the amount or do we just need the, the, um, motion as written on our agenda?
Think if you, if you give us a, a motion as presented this evening, we have the numbers documented as a matter of record and we can insert that into the motion.
I'll make a motion as recommended.
Is that, uh, that, was that Counselor Lanigan? Or, I'm trying to see who, Counselor Lanigan makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Yes, I can get that.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. Any more discussion? I don't see a hand. Oh, wait.
Uh, this is Jonathan.
Does somebody have their hand up?
Uh, trying to.
Oh, okay, Counselor Martell, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
The internet's a little wonky tonight.
Well, if you were on me all the time, then I, if I had you on my screen, I would see even the hand up. Go ahead, Counselor.
Lots of windows. Um, so I just had a question. Um, so I was looking in Granicus and, you know, this, this presentation isn't there. Um, and I was hoping for a little bit more time to actually look through this budget, um, in case I had other questions. I know we did, we did go through it in the, the meeting tonight, but is it usual for us to, um, not have that beforehand to review?
You mean the superintendent's presentation?
Yeah.
Well, he, I think he did that presentation for us to see, but there was been plenty of information about the budget, um, that I had access to. I mean, and, and we got all the information that the Budget Committee got as well, so, um, did you have any particular questions? But it, what, what the presentation, the way this is proceeded is pretty usual, yes.
Okay.
Adam Mayor, may I?
Yes, Counselor Hanselman, maybe you can.
And I, and I apologize, Counselor Martell, if, if you didn't realize this, um, just generally speaking, but, you know, so we're invited or typically, uh, we attend the public hearing presentation, uh, which would have included a presentation very close to what, um, came before us tonight and, and then of course there were the budget meetings throughout, um, time that are helpful to attend. So like from a council standpoint for me personally, uh, when I wasn't on the Budget Committee, watching those meetings is kind of where I would garner my deeper sense of the, the budget coming forward. I, I, that's not helpful to do now, so that's why I'm apologizing, but for future, uh, years, that, that's really helpful to me prior to that process.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? We did have a motion and a second, right? It was Counselor Lanigan and?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous. Thank you, Matt. I know you're all still there. Thanks, Budget Committee, also. Okay, twenty-one dash one-seven-five dash zero-one. Ordered to sign the municipal warrant to call for a June eighth, twenty-twenty-one school budget validation referendum. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Tuttle. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Stackpole. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call a roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion passed. Okay, uh, twenty-one dash one-nine-one dash zero-one. Appointments to council standing committees pursuant to council rules or procedures, section forty-one. Um, I'm, this is an agenda item that I placed effective today. Counselor Lanigan is reappointed to his positions on the following council advisory committees. Solid Waste, Land Bank Authority, and the Fire Station Feasibility Working Group. Want to thank Counselor Tuttle and Counselor Martell for stepping up in his place and welcome back Counselor Lanigan to those committees and there is no action needed on this item.
Thank you so much, Madam.
You are welcome. Um, let's see, twenty-one dash one-six-zero dash zero-one. Resolve to authorize the Parks and Recreation Department to fully open parks, trails, sports fields, and recreational facilities to the public and to run day camps and other events pursuant to and in compliance with current regulations and guidelines from the state of Maine as amended going forward and with the requirement that any groups utilizing city fields and facilities must submit a COVID-nineteen safety plan for approval when making the reservation. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor.
A motion to approve by Counselor Tuttle and a second by Counselor Lanigan. And I am going to, is, um, who's here, Steve, to present this this evening or are you going to do it?
I am here.
Go ahead, Lori. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Hello and good evening. I'm Lori Hagerty, the Recreation Coordinator for the City of Sanford. Thank you, city council members, and thank you Mayor Mistracchio for giving Brian and I an opportunity to spotlight the Department of Parks and Recreation this evening. When most of us hear the words Parks Recreation, it brings us to a time in our life when we visited a park. Maybe it was a picnic, a family gathering, a wedding, or a birthday party. Maybe it was for a swim, a nature hike, or a place to bring the kids to run and scream. Maybe it was a quiet place to sit and read a book or birdwatch. Some of you probably thought basketball, pickleball, baseball, or tennis. Others probably thought of parades, the Fourth of July, road races, water ski shows, or the Brew Fest. Whatever the case may be, Sanford Parks and Recreation offers all of that and more. With the governor's newest rollout in moving Maine forward, our department will be able to open our fields, parks, playgrounds, and programs once again to full capacity with compliance with current, current regulations and guidelines from the state of Maine as amended going forward and with the requirement that any groups utilizing city field facilities must submit a COVID-nineteen safety plan for approval when making the reservation. Last summer, Sanford Parks and Recreation was impressively one of twenty main communities who marched through COVID with masks in one hand and thermometers in the other. Our community was in need of our summer camp programs and parents felt safe dropping them off with our commendable staff. With more and more parents working from their at-home office, we feel that the need for the playground programs will be essential this summer. Some of the special events and the festivals that we have offered in the past may take a bit longer to return as we need to weave our way through the requirements and the guidelines for extremely large group gatherings. With that being said, and as Mayor Mistracchio mentioned earlier, the property subcommittee approved a water ski show and fireworks display only for the Fourth of July. This is very exciting for us. Also, the Northeastern Water Ski Show Team Tournament that was postponed last summer will take place July twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Sanford Parks and Recreation looks forward to serving our community with a vast array of recreation programs for preschool, youth, family, teens, adults, and senior adults. Thank you for your time this evening and we look forward to seeing you. Enjoy our programs and our events.
Thank you, Lori. Great presentation. I see Counselor Tuttle has his hand up, so he may have a question for.
Well, not a question, Mad, not a question, Madam Mayor, but I was driving by City Hall today and I saw a sign congratulating somebody, uh, retiring for thirty years of service to, to this community. Am I correct?
How about that? I started when I was nine years old. I'm only thirty-nine, you know.
Well, I thought it was five, Lori, but I, I wanted to personally, uh, thank you for your years of service and I, Madam Mayor, I think it would be appropriate that if we got Larissa to draft a sentiment from the city thanking Lori Hagerty for her years of service. I would like to see that done.
She's not retiring, is she?
No, I'm not.
She's not retiring, John.
Well, I know they, they tried to do that on me a couple of times, Lori, and I, I rejected it too, but I want to thank you for your years of service and keep quiet.
Thank you, Counselor Tuttle. Counselor Hanselman?
I, I think Counselor Martell might have had his hand up before me, but, uh.
Oh, I still can't. You know what it is? Can we stop sharing for a minute? Because maybe then I'll see Counselor Martell's hand.
Jonathan, you want to jump in?
That's okay. Ladies first. Go ahead.
Well, I just really briefly wanted to recognize, uh, both Lori and Brian, um, accepting the additional responsibilities that they've both had since Alan Grady left us and really just a shout out to what you've accomplished and other departments literally closed down, you know, a year ago roughly and, um, are just reopening now. So what you've accomplished this past year in light of all of the restrictions and many rules is, is impressive and it's been a real benefit to our community. So just thank you for all of your efforts. It's not unnoticed. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Martell?
Uh, so I just had a couple of quick questions. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, as far as the, the COVID-nineteen, um, plan that you said needed to be submitted, is that something that's readily available on the, the website somewhere or how does that work?
Same as last summer, we actually had them, uh, present a plan to us as to what they were planning on doing in the event that, uh, you know, something happened during their presence in our fields and/or, uh, facilities.
Uh, do you mean as far as like a safety plan or is it more around spacing and wearing masks?
More, yes, more of a safety plan, the spacing, you know, what, what they've got required of their participants and/or how many people are actually coming in, you know, to use those facilities.
I would assume contact plans. I would assume plans for contact too, right?
Right.
If something happens, like someone comes, they didn't know they had COVID and they have to contact everybody who might have been near them.
Contract, contract tracing type of thing. Uh, so, so just a follow-up question. As, as the state restrictions hopefully, um, open up more, um, is there a trigger to, for that requirement to go away or would you have to come back to the council and get that changed?
What do you mean, Jon, Jonathan? I didn't understand that question.
Um, I don't have the, if, if you. So there's a current requirement to have the, the plan and if the state says that COVID's gone, everything's fine, um, is there a trigger in this document that gets rid of it so you don't have to come back to the council if that cha-changes?
Yes. Yes, so the, the resolution was specifically, uh, written to recognize that. Uh, it states in here with current regulations and guidelines from the state of Maine as amended going forward. We wholly anticipate, we do, continuing to dissipate, there's a, there's a uptick right now, but we do anticipate. Uh, so we look to the guidance, DECD, Department of Educat-, uh, Department of Economic and Community Development, regularly updates in, in, in compliance and in concurrence with the governor's orders and recommendations from the CDC. Department of Education's consulted in there, Department of Tourism has consulted in there. They amend the guidelines within the DECD website on a regular basis. So we wrote this resolution specifically, uh, from, from multifaceted. A, it was one to gain, uh, public recognition that you as a city council are, uh, authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to go forward with the programming this year in compliance with the ongoing guidelines and giving them the ability to amend those going forward as they're relaxed. And they use the term relaxed, uh, over a period of, period of time. Uh, so that's, that's why it's written in that regard.
Okay, I read that a little differently, but, um, if that's how to enforce.
Diane, are there any other counselors who have questions? I see a member of the public who has a question. Diane Connelly?
Yes, can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
I can.
Um, who, I'm just curious, who's going to enforce the compliance of this?
I will let the Recreation Department answer that.
Thank you.
We have to rely on parents, don't you think?
I was going to say you, Diane.
All right. Um, I also see that Counselor Lanigan has his hand up, but I, Lori, did you want to respond to that?
I would, I would put it on those who are using the facility and, and certainly, um, making sure that that COVID plan that they released to us is, you know, putting it on them to make sure that parents are helping with these situations.
Well, let me ask you a question, Lori, because I think the question probably really is what happens if you, as the Recreation Director, get a complaint about a group that is not following the COVID, um, requirements?
And, and, you know, certainly we had many of those when, uh, the kids were down at the basketball hoops. Uh, we would put up signs indicating that there needed to be social distancing. Uh, the signs didn't last long, um, and, uh, the police officers would do their best at, uh, you know, reiterating what we were asking them.
What about the groups that are like renting our spaces or, or utilizing our, you know, reserving a space to, to use? I think that's the big, I mean, I know that you can't police what happens down at the basketball. I don't think that's the question. I think it really is about a group that comes in and decides that they're not going to mask or they're not going to socially distance, they're not going to do those things and you get a complaint about it.
Can I interject?
Um, let me just, I'm just curi-, I would like to have Lori ask, answer that question.
I am thinking that, uh, we would not allow them to re-rent a facility.
Okay. I just want to know that, because, you know, we get complaints all the time, but the fact is we're taking ourselves out of this equation. We're giving you the ability to do what you want to do, to start renting and doing all that stuff. So at some point, there has to be some accountability. That's all.
So I would say not let them use the facility again.
Counselor Lanigan?
So I just want to say like this is, we're, actually, this is year two of all of this. This isn't year one. So I, I expect even more compliance or even, uh, better safety plans. Last year, we had Little League, we had softball, we had football, we had all these different activities going on when COVID was a lot, uh, a lot more unknown to all of us. So I'm actually confident that this year, um, the groups will be, uh, moving forward with a safe way to use the fields. Um, I know that I'm going to be co-coaching lacrosse here and we're implementing all the same safety protocols that, um, the high school and any of the other sports that are using, you know, able to play right now. So, um, I, I would just, I would have confidence in the parents. They did an excellent job last year. I don't see why, um, they would change how it is and, and ruin, ruin it. So just from that perspective.
I'm thinking maybe more in the facility and of, of, uh, maybe renting the, uh, Folsworth Park. And, um, and Mayor Mistracchio, maybe that's where a party would happen, you know, a gathering of some sort, a family reunion, a picnic, uh, birthday party where in fact they're not doing social distancing, they're not doing the masking, um, if that's in, in fact, part of what needs to happen. And again, we would not allow them to re-rent.
How, I, I got a question though. How? How would you, how would you know if they're vaccinated or if, you know, if you are part of the same family or, you know, that's what I mean, kind of a gray area. Yeah. So I just want to be careful about that.
Oh, and we've had complaints in the past regarding different groups that were there, and obviously, we called them to get their side of the story, to see if in fact, whatever the complaint was, if there was a reason for them doing whatever it was they did. And we generally work it out.
And I just want to mention, Counselor Lanigan, to your statement that we can't, right now, the mandate is to be masked in public in any public places. So that's not even a question. Doesn't matter if you're vaccinated or not. It's that when you're in a public space, you're to be masked.
Yeah, but that's not, it's outdoors, so I...
That is not, that is exactly what the mandate is, is outdoors in a public space mask.
Well, I'm not seeing it right now, so I don't know if you had a family reunion and grandparents are there, I think that they're going to use their best judgment at this point. I'm just saying that we have a lot of information now that we didn't have last year. I'm confident going through this summer that it's going to be even better because people know the right thing to do. And if they want to violate that, that's just like Spears.
If these are public spaces run by the city, people are supposed to be masked and socially distanced. Until that changes, there isn't a question about it. And I'm not saying that people won't do what they want to do, but if I'm in a park and then there's somebody in the, and go, let me just use Go and Park as an example, and somebody's using that gazebo down there and having a party and running around, but I, that means I, as the public, wouldn't feel comfortable using other parts of that area. Doesn't mean the park's closed to that, to anybody else, and that's why in public spaces, masking is required still, regardless of vaccination. And I just want to make that clear. If anybody thinks that just because they rent a space, it doesn't mean they have to comply with those requirements. Because they do. Are there any other questions from counselors?
City Manager Buck wanted to say something, it looks like.
I don't see...
By good man, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, so here's where I'm at with this. So first and foremost, I want to commend the Parks and Recreation, because last year, they stood up, they put the hard work in, they worked with groups, they worked with individual parents, individuals themselves, they put forward programming when other communities were just closing the doors. So first and foremost, I want to commend the Parks and Recreation Department for all of the work they put in last year. The general observation was, when the various groups were coming before the city council, and we put all of the elements in place, that if you're going to utilize the facilities, you have to submit your safety plan, pull it from DECD, adapt it to the programming that you're doing, submit that with your rental agreement and your booking of your facilities and such under that. So there was a lot of hard work by all of those individuals, all of those groups at that point in time. They've adapted to this. They've got it, right? They did an exceptionally, an exceptional job for us last year. I would expect nothing less than that this year. In fact, it should be easier this year. They put all the hard work in there. Some of the restrictions are relaxed currently, and they're going to continue to be relaxed. People rented the parks for various wedding venues and such under that. We did spot checks either through PD or through Parks and Recreation staff themselves. By and large, we had very, very good compliance. So I would anticipate the same going forward for this year. I think it's easier people have adapted to, they've come to accept, this is what we need to do to operate safely. So I'd like to move forward with that type of perception. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I agree with you. They have done a very good job. The question was asked, and I just wanted it answered. Anything else before we vote on this item? I will call a roll. Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Twenty-one dash one-six-one dash zero-one, a resolution in support of extended producer responsibility for packaging. Do we want a motion to discuss this, or can I have a motion in support?
I would move that we support this. I think we can have the discussion. It's a fairly simple matter. Depends on how the council feels on it, but I'd like to...
Okay, so there's a motion to approve by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Tuttle. Do you want me to read the resolution first, or do you want to discuss it first?
Well, I think, just to look at the point of it, and then we can dig a little, dig a little deeper, being very brief, and I apologize if I break up or even disappear in the middle of this, so I'll move along quickly. This is basically to move some of the cost of recycling, either to eliminate the cost or move the cost of the recycling back on the manufacturer, the packaging. So I would look at this and say, the hope would be that if there's a charge to the manufacturer for the packaging that they use to ship their product, that they would find a different way to package their product to eliminate that fee. But essentially, the fee is gathered from the business, I believe at the state level, and Steve can help me out on this, and then the funds that are collected at the state are then passed down to the community. And again, we look at the, you know, maybe these funds could be used if we in fact get some funding, you know, to keep the prices of our paper throw bags down or other ways to reduce our fees for municipal waste and recycling. It's, we've discussed it, there's, you know, this came out of subcommittee. Generally, we were in consensus to give this a try, and that's why I want to present it, that, you know, there's no, some of us were more optimistic than others that this might work. Some of us don't believe there'll be any funding that will come from this, and so on. But I think it's worth signing up for. It's, this isn't a guarantee. This is just a resolution in support of this, and, you know, it may help us with some funding. It may end up to just be a shot in the dark or whatever, but it doesn't hurt to try, I guess.
Counselors, who have, I see Counselor Lanigan, go ahead, Counselor Lanigan.
So I'm trying to understand this. So what we're going to do is, is we're going to increase, like, so if you get a cardboard box with your medicine delivered to your house, you want to charge a tax on top of that? And you think that, you think that the person that is shipping it is going to pay that, or do you think the consumer is going to pay that?
Well, right now, the consumer is paying for it, and the idea is to have the person who produces the trash to actually pay a portion to get rid of the trash.
So I just, I just want to speak...
Resolution in.
Yeah, so I just want to speak from some experience. I work for, I have the privilege of working for a package company, and right now, currently, we're put out just out of Wells seventeen thousand boxes a day out to the communities because people are shipping more to their house because it's safer. It's actually more environmental friendly to have one truck driving around versus eighty cars going to one store for a trinket. I just would be very cautious of what you're doing, because I know it sounds good on this proclamation, but if you raise the cost of boxes, UPS isn't going to pay for it, Amazon's not going to pay for it, FedEx isn't going to pay for it, the trinket maker's not going to pay for it, Johnny at home that got the package is going to pay for it, just like they pay the sales tax, just like they pay a use tax. This isn't just going to be another pass-through tax. So not only are they going to pay to now get rid of that recycling, they're also going to pay to get the recycling. So I just think it's a terrible idea. I can understand in concept how it would sound really cool, but it didn't work with milk jugs. It barely works with NIPS on the five cent, you know, refund thing. So I just, I think this is a bad idea, and I think it's just another tax hidden that is going to hit our, hit our population. And right now, it's our elder, our senior population that's getting the most shipped to their house because it's the safest for them. So it's a direct tax on them, and I just, I'm not for it. I'm sorry.
Counselor Lanigan, can I just say that I agree with you in the respect that it's a really interesting item for discussion? And truthfully, I went and looked at the bill that this proclamation relates to, and it came out of committee with the note that even though it's a committee bill, it's a committee bill to discuss the idea, and the committee takes no stand on whether they agree with it or not. So it really is just something to discuss, which I thought was interesting at the legislative level, where it really is going to have to be the change to try to encourage packagers to use things that are more easily recyclable. So if you look at it in its most basic form, doesn't mean that this is the best way, the way they discussed it, but it opens it up for a discussion, and it just shows the legislature that there are people who are actually interested in continuing to recycle and find a way that it doesn't cost us a lot of money, that it may even be profitable down the road for everyone. So...
Yeah, I'd rather discuss unicorns. I mean, this is, I mean, this is, I don't know.
And I just want to say, I disagree with you about the NIPS, because that was my bill, and I don't see NIPS around anymore now that there's a deposit. So it does...
The other, the other piece to this, the other piece to this, and I get it, Luke, I do, I get it. But the other piece to this is, you know, you might have a cardboard box, and then there's an item in there that has a clear plastic, like a Saran Wrap kind of plastic that goes around the box, which is not really recyclable like the cardboard is. Is there another way, or can that plastic wrap just be eliminated so that, you know, again, it's helping the environment a little bit? I think that's the other part of this idea, is putting it back on the manufacturer to say, you know, do we really need this, this plastic wrap around here? Because that's just something that's going to burn up in one of our landfills. Is there other stuff that we can do? So I think that's opening that kind of discussion up, so...
And from what I can, just to say on top of that, I agree with you, but these companies, they're into nickels and dimes and pennies, and if they can cut a piece of plastic out because it's going to save them one cent or one cent in shipping or whatever it is, they're going to do it. I think that the market drives itself in this aspect of it, because someday, you will find probably reusable Amazon boxes, because they'll find a way to do it profitably and make it better for their company. I think trying to do it through legislation is silly, and those, these actions only cost the actual consumer more money versus allowing the business to do it to cut costs. That's all.
Okay, Counselor Martel had his hand up first, and then Counselor Hanselman.
Yeah, I have pretty similar thoughts as regard to this, and I don't, I have a hard time supporting sort of a blanket statement when there's no specific legislation in play that we can speak to, pros or cons, but anytime you add a tax to something, there's always pass-through costs, whether it's on the retailer or... So the person that ends up bearing the majority of that cost is the end user for the most part. So you're going to have all these people that are paying extra for these packaging enhancements, and you probably won't make any changes at the supplier in China that's making these widgets that Amazon is shipping out. So while I think it's well-intentioned, I have a hard time supporting a resolution without something a little bit more specific behind it.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just wanted to share the perspective, actually, of our past mayor, Cody. I brought forward a resolution very different from this one, and we had a great conversation about whether or not at the council level, we should be in the practice of supporting resolutions that go up to Augusta. And it was an interesting conversation, because I hadn't thought about it, but, you know, it leads me to just the thought process of the direct impact to, or being careful about getting to politics at the state level that isn't, as a council member, that isn't directly impactful to our constituents in a very clear and concise way. And so, I don't know, I guess I personally, not because I don't support the concept, honestly, or think that we should move forward, but I hesitate a little bit to set a precedence about doing a lot of resolutions. I just want to be careful about that, is my thinking.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman, and I expressed similar concerns when it came forward, but I felt that because the Trash, the Solid Waste Committee had decided it was worthwhile, I decided to improve agenda, and unless I hear otherwise, I'll probably read the resolution and then we'll vote on it, unless somebody makes a motion to table it.
I would move, I would move the question.
Thank you, okay. I'm going to read the proclamation unless there's, and then I will call the roll unless there's more discussion after I read the resolution. "A resolution in support of extended producer responsibility. Whereas many Maine communities are struggling to maintain and in some cases are eliminating recycling programs due to rising costs and difficult to manage materials. And whereas the city of Stanford has experienced an increase in cost associated with collection and handling recyclable materials. And whereas product packaging, which includes plastic, metal, glass, and cardboard, constitutes approximately thirty to forty percent of the materials managed by weight in Maine's municipal waste management programs. And whereas producers of product packaging have little incentive to minimize wasteful packaging or increase access to recycling. And there is no organized coordination between the producers of packaging and municipalities that are responsible for disposing of or recycling the packaging materials. And whereas other parts of the world, including all European Union member states and five provinces in Canada, have implemented producer responsibility, producers of product packaging, and have taken some or all responsibility for the management of post-consumer packaging in, and as a result, have greatly increased recycling rates, expanded infrastructure investment, created jobs, and reduced taxpayer costs. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Stanford, Maine, in the spirit of extended producer responsibility, states its support for the concept of proposed EPR packaging legislation and encourages the Maine Legislature to continue working to develop a policy." I will, unless there's more discussion, I think it's pretty clear what that's asking for. It's not asking them to, just asking them, I think, to discuss it and to continue discussing. And in a way, it lets them know, in my mind, that there's an issue with disposing of packaging. So I will, oh, I see Counselor Lanigan has his hand up. Go ahead.
It's only a technical question. On a resolution from the city council, does it have to be unanimous to go up?
It does not.
Okay. So it'll only be signed by the supporting counselors?
No, it's only signed by the city manager.
Okay.
On behalf of the council. I will call the roll. I don't see any other hands up. So speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, Counselor Martel?
I'm going to vote against it, so no.
Counselor Hanselman?
No.
Counselor Tuttle?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan?
No.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
No.
I think you're a no.
No.
Okay, and I am also a no. So that motion is defeated. What was that, four to three?
Two.
Four to two. Wait a minute.
Five to two.
Five to two, sorry. I'm not used to having to keep track.
Seven to two, Madam Mayor.
The motion was actually two in favor and five against?
Yes.
Okay, so it was two to five. All right, so the motion is defeated. And I want to thank you guys on the Solid Waste Committee. I understand why you passed it on. I'm looking at it differently than I would as a legislator. I think that I, before COVID, I actually brought forth an equal rights amendment that we needed to pass at the legislative level and thought it was incredibly important to everybody. But as the mayor, I probably would have had objections to bringing it forward. So I think as a nonpartisan board, that it's, sometimes does behoove us to try to stay out of that political... out of that political arena. Okay, so council, council member comments, um, wait, let me get my list, so I don't forget anybody. Councillor Martel?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of comments, as far as the vaccination site, I've heard a lot of great feedback, people have said that, you know, there's lots of parking, they had people there in the parking lot to direct, direct people, the wait time was very short, and they were impressed with the professionalism and how things were laid out, so that was, that was the thing I wanted to comment on earlier, and I, my mic wasn't working, so I just wanted to, to say that, and thank you for everyone that's put effort into that.
Thank you, and I apologize for not seeing your hand previous.
Oh, that's okay.
Councillor Hanselman?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to mention that there's a couple efforts going on in Stanford to do some, some community cleanup, in particular, our officer Eric Smalls doing some work at some of our prior sites where folks were living outside, so I just wanted to share that, good news, and he's garnering volunteers and organizations to help him accomplish that, and then I know Mayor Mistrakio, you're working on, you know, other, other options out there, so I just wanted to mention to folks that, you know, we're hearing some other complaints or concerns about litter and some of the issues, and, and it's not going unaddressed, so thank you.
Okay, councillor Tuttle?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just like to continue to thank Lori Haggerty for thirty years of service to this community, and Lori, I apologize for retirement thing, but I've done that before, and as I've said, people have tried to retire me on numerous occasions, so I hope you accept my apology. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Tuttle, councillor Stackpole?
Uh, yeah, very briefly, I follow up on councillor Martel's comment, I, I spoke about my experience down at the Sanford vaccination site, the, the old Marshalls, excellent experience down there. I'm going back this Friday for my second Moderna shot, and I'm saying that to encourage everybody to get their shot when it's available to them, sign up, get your shot. My first shot, I had a little patch of soreness in my arm the next day for a few hours, probably gone by noon time, no other side effects, I've been fine ever since, and once again, I get their shot when it's their time. Sign up for it and get your shot, it's a piece of cake.
Thank you, councillor Stackpole, councillor Lanigan?
Yes, I would just like to echo that, is get your shot, it's, it's not that bad. I was, I got my second one the other day, and it's a little fun for a couple hours after it, but it's worth it, because the peace of mind is great, and I didn't turn into a zombie, my young people, so just get your vaccine, like, talk with all the, whatever you're hearing out there, it's really safe and, and important to get us all back to do, going, socializing with each other.
Well, not yet, Luke, right?
Not yet, not yet.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yeah, I, I got my first one last week, I have no problems using a vaccine, so, but I, I, my building here at the townhouse is almost a hundred percent vaccinated, and I think there are a few left with second thoughts, but we'll be able to be in the sixty-five and over category with a hundred percent, so I'm pleased, I'm very pleased about that. I will tell you that in Glacier County, Montana, I was playing around on the New York Times site, they are at ninety-nine percent over sixty-five. Now I'm thinking Glacier County, Montana may not have a lot of people over sixty-five, because it sounds really cold, but they are at ninety-nine percent, I thought that was a great if ever on the.
Okay, is that, do you have any other comments? Are you all?
No, I'm too tired.
Okay, well, I'm not going to have any comments, because I think there's way too much medical information being shared under councillor comments, so I will not tell you my vaccination status. I think we'll just go on to agenda items. Councillor Martel? Did he leave already?
No, no, I'm still here, just take, took me a second to get off mute, I don't, I don't have anything new to add.
Okay, that's okay not to have anything. Councillor Hanselman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councillor Tuttle?
I'm all set, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Stackpole?
All set.
Councillor Lanigan?
Good to go, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
No, all set.
All right, we are done, I will declare us adjourned, and thank you all for all your work tonight.